Can I get your guys' names?
Lee McMullin.
Tony Salsido.
Okay, you spell your last name.
S A L C I D O.
And you are M C M I L L Ian?
Yep.
Okay.
Take care of the minutes first. Have any corrections?
I didn't see any corrections. I have two additions. Brock Mueller formally addressed the board. That wasn't in there.
No, I didn't put in detail everybody that did. I just summarized it. But they took comment from the public.
Okay. And the questions to the county attorney from the board, the answers were no. I mean, where is that? It was before we went into executive session?
Yeah.
What about the questions?
Inquired with county attorney on the following subjects: whether the county had conducted a credit check or a background check, whether any financial documents have been received. Those are all answered no. And then whether Lincoln Park Manor has been sold. That was to be determined when we had our executive session.
I basically was just trying to list things. I was disgusted.
I know. I'm just saying if you were reading it and you didn't, and you weren't there.
Come on in.
The answer was no to those first three.
Do you want them added?
I think it's important if something comes up in the future to to know that that was, you know, the whole purpose of it being asked in public session as opposed to executive was so that the the determination could be made beforehand, before the signing of the lease.
I guess I don't have trouble with addition.
Okay, so how do you want to put in there?
I would just put, leave the questions that you had and then just put response no, response no, response no. And then has Lincoln Park Manor been sold? To be determined. And then I think she responded to the question about the collection of the debt. I think she was unsure. I don't know what word she used, but we could determine that when the time comes or something is what she said. I'm sorry, I forgot. There is one correction. Under...
What did you want after Lincoln Park Manor was so described?
Oh, that was to be determined. That was one of our main questions there. The commissioner asked before before we went into executive session. I think you asked that.
I think a better response was that she could not answer. She had no answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, the attorney, yes, yes.
She only had material.
Correct, yeah.
She presented all material she had concerning that to us prior to the meeting.
So, put could not answer?
No, I would put that she had, she answered, said I have given you all information that I have available for that.
You want me to put that? You want me to put that?
That she had provided prior to the meeting all information that she had.
Okay. We're getting very verbatim and I'm not a verbatim person, so I'm just gonna point that out to you.
Okay, the only other thing I have-
And then the last one, what did you want on there? Sorry.
Oh, um... Undetermined. I would put undetermined at this time.
Kiki doki. Okay.
Okay. The only other thing I have is under the, where is that?
You might tell me the page, because I think we're now to four pages.
Okay, at the top of page two. Flew further related in her opinion. That wasn't my opinion. That was the opinion of an attorney from Kansas Association of Counties.
Oh, you didn't say that downstairs.
Are you gonna name him?
Well, that is why I didn't, you know, you can just take out in her opinion because it wasn't mine, but that's why I didn't.
Maybe you should just take out in her opinion.
That's fine.
Because if you're not gonna name the attorney, I don't think it would.
That's fine. And if you all would like the correspondence between myself and the attorney, I'd be more than happy to give it to you. I didn't at the time, just so as not to have any conflict there.
Okay. Strikes are okay? And then are we putting everybody that addressed? Because Brock Mueller wasn't the only one that addressed the board.
Well, I mean, he was the only-
I don't think we need to. I think we just said we took public comments. It's what we do when we do the budget hearings. So we just take public comments.
Okay. Is that unanimous or a...
That's fine. I mean, I think there's a difference between someone who formally addresses the board versus someone who just comes up with a question. And a formal address of the board, I think, deserves notation. It doesn't, maybe not in this scenario because we were having, you know, an entire session in the nursing home, but...
Well, if I list one, I need to list them all.
I don't know how we're gonna determine every person that addresses the board.
I know John did, Katie did, Sue Brown did.
You don't have to list any in this particular instance. It kind of just brings me to a point that I'll discuss after we correct the minutes, so that's fine. I mean, I'm not I'm not gonna put up an argument against having it listed. It's just a point of interest.
Are you guys ready?
I'm ready.
I'm ready. I've never approved the, may I just correct it?
Have a second?
I have a second.
I'm moving. Second, any questions? All fair sound?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carried. Okay, I guess. Which one of you is the e-waste man?
Yes, sir, both of us actually.
You want us to stand up?
No, 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 no.
Okay, good.
We don't have a podium, so we're-
This is something that we've made. But what we're trying to do, we, I don't know if you guys are still with the e-waste coalition in Hawthorne County?
Yes, we are.
We spoke with Bo down there. He's the solid waste guy down there. And pretty much got his blessing to try to see how many counties we can pull towards us. That way we are able to help him out and collect the e-waste. Right now, we're collecting hopefully from Mitchell County and our city and other areas, but our goal is to try to create a one-stop place to where everyone can, you know, drop off e-waste. And we will come pick it up whenever it's ready to be picked up. So what we're trying to do is eliminate all electronic waste from the waste stream. And part of that is trying to work in coordinates with every county that either has a transfer station or a landfill. So our goal is to try to hopefully save you guys money by, you know, tipping fees and that sort. It also eliminates, I think it's a thousand dollar charge that you guys pay annually for that e-waste coalition.
E-waste coalition.
We wouldn't charge anything other than for CRTs, which is forty-eight cents a pound. That's it. Everything else that's electronic, we just take and we disassemble and it goes out to commodity buyers. So that's what we're here for and hopefully we are able to help you guys out in that regard. You guys have any questions?
How many people are left in the Compaq? How many counties do you know? Does Mitchell County-
Seven.
Did Mitchell County pull up?
Yeah, Mitchell County, we just we just talked to Cloud County. We're getting e-waste up there. We'll go up to Trigo County, talk to them tomorrow, but currently there's seven. Bo said, out of the seven, like Hill City, out there, they only pick up maybe once every year and a half. There just isn't, isn't the drive there that there used to be, but...
Do you know, Don, do we own that trailer or does the Compaq own the trailer?
I think they own the trailer.
Yeah, the e-waste coalition owns that trailer. That's what that thousand dollar fee is for. Our our goal is to take it away from a government entity into a private entity. My belief is a private entity, innovation is just accelerated through the private sector rather than the government sector. We've seen with the e-waste coalitions, it started in 2008. What happened is, and this is why they've broken down to what they are now, which is very few. The one out in Thomas County was barely in existence. But the government initiative, there was a state initiative that where you would get about ten cents a pound and that went away. And I've always felt that it is the wrong way to incentivize anything. Because eventually that money's gonna go away, which it did. And that's why I believe not only we're one of the only ones in the state of Kansas that actually do this and we're hoping to encompass all of central Kansas and the close surrounding counties and spread on west and go back east. So far it's been working like he said. We've had a lot of counties that are very appreciative of what we're trying to do. We go pick it up. It's not really, the only headache that you guys have is sorting it out and then calling us and then we come we come with our trailer and we come get it and we take it away. So it's not, not a lot of work on the part for your guys, county workers and...
But we'll have to provide some places for it. I assume the coalition will do something to the trailer.
Think so. We're actually kind of looking into that right now and talking to Bo and getting out and talking to everyone, all the counties right now and looking at maybe the possibility of being able to buy those trailers from the coalition themselves, but right now, we're just kind of out talking to you guys and seeing where we can go from there and if there's enough interest for that.
Well, like when the coalition was formed, there wasn't any other option.
Yeah.
The mandate came down that you were gonna separate the e-waste and there were no options, so the coalition was formed at that time. I don't believe I have an issue with going away from the coalition.
No, I don't. When is our year up with it?
I think they're on a calendar year, I'm 100% sure.
I don't remember. Have we had any correspondence from Austin yet?
If we do, Carrie Jackson gets up. I don't.
Is there a contract to sign with you?
Yeah, there will be. There will be. Our goal is to try to get everybody under contract and in that way that also helps us with funding. So we can prove that, you know, we have these counties that are willing to work with us and we know about this much e-waste will be coming through our chain, so...
What are the basic terms of the contract?
Pretty much, you guys just sign that this is the year-to-year contract.
One year?
Yeah. So we pretty much just agree that we'll take all the e-waste minus the charge for or CRTs and then also if you guys do data destruction or you guys need certificate destruction, we provide that to you. So we physically destroy hard drives, memory sticks, all that kind of stuff. And we also do a application wipe on anything else that you guys want wiped. So we also provide that service, but for the most part, like I said, it's about ninety-five percent of it is free other than CRTs and then the data destruction with a certificate of destruction for each data medium. So it's pretty much self-reliant. I think a lot of the counties are already doing it, which has been easy because all we're doing now is just stepping in and picking it up.
Carrie, can I please see that? Do you provide any, that's okay, do you provide any literature in bulk for public awareness?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're so we just started doing this full-time two weeks ago.
Oh.
And it went from idea in September to actually doing it now, so. Yeah, it's happened pretty quick. And one thing to touch on the CRTs, we'll be charging forty-eight cents a pound, but if you guys wanted to charge fifty or fifty-five to recoup some of that cost, you know, I guess your guys handling out there at the landfill or at the transfer station and then we would just get the forty-eight is what we would go back, but there's that. We're also still kicking around ideas on what can we do in the communities to get the awareness out there, whether it's a drive. You know, we're open to any and all ideas because we are new and we're still trying to promote this, so anything you guys come up with, we'd sure entertain it and like to kick it around. Because right now, it's just trial by fire, so.
And we've actually started working with K-State. They're going to kind of help us with this, which is awesome. And then the other part is Heather Hartman. You guys probably know her from Mitchell County's economic development team. There's a Dan Hanson Foundation and she's offered to help us with grants for counties if they wanted to do one big drive for CRTs. There's this allotted money there that will help annually with collecting CRTs. So we've had a lot of positive feedback, a lot of ideas and I've always said there's no such thing as a bad idea. We just gotta figure if it works, so. It's like I said, I think it's positively been accepted so far throughout wherever we've been. Because in honesty, we really want to try to remove this. Part of this came from an initiative, what I wrote an ethics paper for on college from when I got back from Iraq the second time. We burned a lot of stuff. And I've always wondered, you know, what is this stuff doing to us while we're burning? I mean, we literally throw laptops in the fires. And through that research, I found out just how toxic this stuff is. And then, and it's like when I spoke to the KDH guy, you know, even though you have a liner, eventually that liner deteriorates and those chemicals will seep into the land and then if there's an underground water source, the underground water source. Now, our goal is to affect rural communities more than anything. I wanted to come back home, live in Kansas and take this initiative. Now that I'm here, I've formed a team with two other guys. I believe we can do that. I think being where we are centrally located by two major arteries of interstates really, really helps us become a viable option for everyone, not just here in Kansas hopefully, but throughout the Midwest.
You're in Beloit?
Yes, yes. Well, we actually work out dual. At the old high school.
We repurposed the high school, so kind of going with the theme.
Nice, very nice.
We're really into that reuse, refurbishment. There's a lot of stuff. We also have an eBay store that we built. Our guy, that's really awesome. He's not here. He's actually back at the shop shipping stuff. But what we try to do, anything that we can take and repurpose, we actually try to put back on the market as a refurbished item. That was part of our process of trying to get our two certified. Plus, we are, we just got Microsoft licensed to be a refurbisher. So that was about three or four weeks ago. So we're really trying to come in line the way that the private sector is. There's no one really like us outside of Kansas City and is doing this in Kansas, so I really, I really believe that we can offer a lot, a lot of help.
So are your pickups gonna be on a regular basis or...
Yep. If you guys want them that way, you guys just tell us what day you guys want us here and we schedule those days. We're trying to make it accommodate what works best for you guys. Understanding in these rural communities, there's not a lot of help, you know, as far as working at these transfer stations or the landfills, so I understand that we have to make sure that we accommodate what you guys want us to do.
So you have, you aren't gonna set up a route where you run?
We eventually will.
Once, yeah. So once we're logistically sound, right now it's too spotty for us to be doing that, so we're really relying on you guys or whoever. Just kind of give us a call or heads up, hey, when you're swinging through next time or, you know, go ahead and pick us up, but...
Would you provide some sort of storage container that they can isolate, you know, separate and isolate the items that you're going to pick up? Could that be?
We can probably do something. That's part of kind of what we're taught, the way we wanted to come and talk and get this ball rolling.
It's like a purchase of trash, what I've been thinking.
So...
Our goal is to see what you guys need, see where we fit in and see what we can give you guys. I want to make this as easy as possible for everybody that's involved.
We get somewhat regular eventually. We wouldn't require very much of a storage.
Yeah, I can't say it being a huge space right now, but at least instead of throwing it off in the corner, let's say.
Right now, Mitchell County has, we have three crates out there, basically game boxes that are probably about four and a half feet tall, five feet. They store it there and then we just go pick it up when they call. And Cloud County has, they store it in C-bags and then we just go pick it up go from there. But yeah, if you guys need containers of some sort, we can provide that. We will figure out another way to provide them. It can't be that expensive for us to do.
Let's talk to our landfill operator and see just how much we're getting in and we'll have better idea as far as storage goes. I'm open to it.
So are you picking up the coalitions now from Osborne?
Yes, in fact, they're gonna do, Bo said that they should have a load ready by June or July. So here soon, we should see a big influx coming from that offering e-waste coalition. I think you said right now they're right around twenty thousand pounds gathered, so. And we already have probably the same twenty thousand pounds at our facility. So we're slowly gaining weight, which is the number one deal that we need to try and do is create weight. That's what makes us viable.
Do you have intention to present to the schools and the hospital here?
I would like to. I would really, really like to. Our goal, like I said, is to be an outlet source for every small business, every county. I think we provide a service that is much, much needed. We know these things aren't going away. Everyone replaces them about, on average, between eighteen and twenty-four months. So your desktop's a little longer, thirty-six to forty-eight months, but it's a thing that's not going away. Here we are. The average person throws away, you know, we're estimating around twenty-eight pounds in these rural communities per person. In the city, it's more like forty point two pounds annually, so there's a lot of it being thrown away. During the time of this e-waste coalition high, they were able to process about four point two million pounds all the coalitions throughout the state of Kansas. Now, it's not even a million pounds being processed. It's as the money dried up, the initiative went away and no one really wants to deal with it. Even Bo told us that. I really don't want to deal with it, but we are doing a service. And I understood him because I really, I'm a person that believes that private sector is so much better at anything that provides a service.
Yeah, I think there's been an option to go private sector at the beginning, but the coalition never really formed.
Yes. And that's what the KDH guy said. He said, we did it as a state just to try to, you know, have a solution to the problem. But he said, there was just nobody private that wanted to do this. And I think some of it is, just from talking to the other electronic waste people throughout the Midwest, we've been to Davenport, Iowa, spoke with people in Oklahoma, went to Nebraska. The thing with us is that makes us different. Two of us, we've worked in IT, you know, basically our whole life, so we know the live stream of an electronic device. So our process is a little different than a normal waste facility. We just don't see it as throwaway. We've tried to run diagnostic testing and stuff, wanted to see if it's viable. And there was one thing that was mentioned to us in Davenport is what should help us accelerate this company is that knowledge that they didn't have. They were just waste, so we're managing the team, so we're different and I think because we're different, we really could help a lot of people.
You guys do computer repair for individuals?
I don't want to get into that.
Unfortunately, no. We can recommend a lot of people, but...
See, our, our goal is to work with the mom and pop little computer repair shops in these rural communities because we need them. We don't want to take, I have a network administrator, I worked at Acro over there for five years managing the whole network infrastructure and servers. And the other guy there was our desktop help that's still at the school right now. So we, we know how to do it, but I wanted to create a company that is not competing with these mom and pop shops in the rural communities. I really want them to be there because we need them. We really do need them, so.
This is totally off topic, but one small question for you. I guess it's not small, but what do you think the potential is for server farm in this area?
It's one of my ideas. Part of this, there's, my goal in three years is to spin off a couple other information technology-based companies off of this. We've had investors want to invest in this around seven. I've said no to all of them, but knowing that in the future, we will need investors for some of these other projects. I think it's a good idea, I'll just tell you that.
I'm not in the IT world at all, so you don't have to look at me as competition now.
There's two problems in the state of Kansas. I was doing research for my computer science degree. We're we're having a severe brain drain in this state and we're also having a generational drain. We're having a lot of our young population leave the state. We need to bring, and I, I love agriculture. I grew up working in feed yards in high school in western Kansas. It has nothing to do with, but I do believe that we need to create an economic diversity pool within the state if we want to keep these young people in these rural communities. And I think technology is a way to do it with 3D printing, server farming and this. There's a lot of ideas that I think that will attract and keep our younger generation there for that reason. It's cheaper, cheaper living and you can still get high dollar salaries based off of this type of work. Yeah, your server farm idea, I really, really don't like.
It wasn't my idea. Someone actually brought that to me and I said I would ask around and I did a little bit of my own research and I was worried about the climate here. You know, but I mean, I would be no part of that other than to just solicit, you know.
Funds. That's the one thing we really want to do, but like I said, our initiative right now is to start this, create an outlet for those other projects is what we're trying to do. You know, the ending of all technology has to have a solution, so I felt like if we start with a solution to the end, those other projects will feed more at the end, so this is where we're at.
Well, I would be open to working with you. I mean, I can't speak for the whole board, but and how can we find out when our is it, are we under contract with?
I think so, but I don't think that the coalition would probably
And we're going-
I would say that the coalition would probably disband.
We're going to talk to them actually next week.
In Osborne, yeah.
And ask them that exact thing, because like I said, Bo, Bo's already given us
His blessing.
His blessing on going and talking to you guys and and he says it will not hurt me at all if you guys-
I don't think, no one's profiting from it, so.
We wanted to get in front of the commissioners there and- We wanted to get in front of the commissioners there and let them know what's going on and, and make sure we've got their blessing on, uh, breaking off now or, or when they want to do that, so...
Yeah, once Bo said, "I don't want this," I said, "Well, we need, the next step is to go talk to each, and every one of the counties that are a part of this." And that was just out of respect for him. I didn't know how big of an initiative it was on his part. He's pretty much said that it's cost him money annually to get this up to Lebanon. This is where it all goes, um, which was another mind-boggling thing that I learned. Um, prisoners doing this, well, rather than private sector employees. I think that's what counts, is how many jobs can we create in this real world? This is a good viable way to create jobs.
It's like you're saying doubt that we've been aware that the coalition was in trouble.
Yeah.
You know, I think we were very much aware.
I...
That we were either gonna have to put up more money or something else was gonna have to change, you know?
That's exactly what the guy at Cloud, Cloud County was saying.
So, I mean, you know, we visit with them, as far as I'm concerned, you can tell them, yeah, we'll, we're willing to cut, you know, cut the coalition. Give our blessings to you as soon as they want to.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or concerns? And call me anytime. If you guys have questions, I'll tell you just then. Call me. I'm, I'm always willing and ready to answer any questions, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess after you guys talk to the landfill out there or whatever, just let us know and, and we'll, we'll try to work with you.
You can, feel free to stop out there and visit them.
Absolutely.
You know, it's right west of town here, two miles.
Okay.
So, feel free about and introduce yourselves and tell them that you didn't see us. They can give you an idea on the amount they get.
Okay.
And, and stuff.
Sounds good.
They could be thinking of a storage, uh, deal too, what they would do, storage.
Have you seen where it is?
No.
If, if you're on eighteen and you head west, there's a teeny little sign, but if you look up on the hillside, you'll see the, the metal building. It's pretty much by itself, you'll notice it.
Okay.
It's two miles. Go a mile past the airport.
Okay.
On north side of Hager. Name's Jerry Jackson is the operator.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Any other questions, Karen?
I don't believe I do.
All right. Well, thank you.
Nice meeting you. Thank you.
See ya.
Thanks, sir.
See ya. See you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, David.
How are you guys?
Good.
Thank you.
Feel free to change your sign, baby.
(laughing) I'm sorry, it's not executive session?
No, I walked past it. I never paid any attention to it.
I saw it, just 'cause I was standing there. How are you folks this morning?
Good.
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Thank you. Um, last week I had approached you folks about having, um, front-end stuff done on my vehicle. The pa- the quote on the back is what Jared had, had sent me for the front-end work that was, that was needing to be done. Um, you guys requested that I stop and get another bid from a vendor. Um, last week when I was coming home from regional homeland security meeting up in Beloit, I was headed home and my check engine sensor light came on. Um, I had, it's previously scheduled an appointment with Meyer Tire, and they looked at the front end, and the Meyer Tire quote is on the front end, the left upper, um, ball joint is, is what they were saying needs to be fixed. And they said they can still rotate the tires around to the back, and then that problem that I'm having on the front end with the tire wear, the grooving on the inside will, would, um, pace itself back out, or, or again, the tire rotation will help alleviate that problem. Um, while the vehicle was there, I also had them check the, check engine sensor light, and they pulled the number six coil off the spark plug, switched it out with the distributor cap, and it was still missing on a particular cylinder. Um, at that point, Jeff Meyer told Jeff, told me that he will not work on that vehicle because of whatever is the problem. He, but he said, "I, I, I will make you aware that the diagnostics is not this." Um, and then I had previously scheduled another appointment with the vehicle to be checked on the front end with Keivers, and he had it Wednesday, and he said, "I shouldn't be driving the vehicle." And I said, "Well, I need to approach you guys about jumping into the motor and seeing what's wrong." Um, he said there were two different diagnostic lights that came on, and it wasn't the distributor cap and the wiring in the spark plug or any of that either, he said. But, again, I told them before anything else happened, I need to approach you guys about seeing what we're going to do about that, so...
Does, does this mean that Myers doesn't believe that the control arm needs replaced? Because...
That's my understanding, yes, yes.
Did you happen to mention it, or is it, I mean...
He didn't even mention it, no. But again, he had the, he had the whole vehicle on the lift and went through, had the tires off, was doing checks and, and doing all that stuff with that. So, and he'd just done a bunch of personal work on my, my personal vehicle, um, uh, similar to that. And, and i- it, it was similar to that cost also.
Yeah, I'm only asking because that's the big difference in the quotes.
Jared, yes, yes. Yes. So, I'm, I'm asking for your blessing that I can continue to have my vehicle looked at by Keivers, and, and once I find out, then get back with you guys next Monday again to find out, or?
A lot of things. You're in possession, you need the vehicle.
Yeah.
Need to fix it.
Okay, because since last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and today I'm driving my personal vehicle, but, but, so, okay. I will, I will go ahead and communicate, and once I hear something from them, I'll let Dawn be aware. Or, I think I have all your phone numbers, except maybe Alexis, I don't have yours, I don't think.
Okay.
I think you can probably suffice to let Dawn know.
Okay, okay. And let her communicate with you guys?
Yeah, I think you gotta get fixed, so...
Okay, yeah. All right, all right. Yeah, I'll, I'll keep you guys posted.
Okay. If it's not operable, we need to get fixed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Does that mean he's having all this work done at Keivers regardless of these bids?
Certainly, he's gotta get the engine fixed.
Yeah, gotta get it run, so...
I'm not sure that Keever even gave him a bid yet on that.
Yeah, I think it was, he took the engine situation and, and...
Okay, Bart, a little early, but you're early, so we'll...
All right.
Be ready for you.
All right. Sounds good, man. Um, Kelly's out of the office today, so I'm here on beat up, uh, yeah, economic development. And, uh, as everybody knows, Post Rock Community Foundation put twenty thousand, uh, in a fund for grants for cleanup. And, um, Barnard had a cleanup, Sylvan had a cleanup, and Lincoln had a cleanup. But all the funds were used, and we were notified that they really would like to use up the whole twenty thousand. So, Kelly said, "Let's figure out a way to use it." And what we decided that might work the best is kind of a mop-up day and have, um, the landfill CD pit available and open and free that day, which we would reimburse probably, well, the grant we're going to write is for five thousand dollars. And so, we don't think that probably five thousand dollars worth of stuff could possibly maybe come in on one open day at the landfill. So, if it didn't, we would maybe have a following Saturday or the next month, have another Saturday that would be open. We'll advertise. We can't really go out and try to find these places or sheds or whatever. We're just hoping that people will hear about it, see it, read about it, know that that might be the day that they need to get that shed out there and get it over and done with, so, um...
So, are you talking just about CD waste, or?
Yes, just totally CD waste. No tires, no, no, nothing else. It would just be, uh, this CD pit. And because we have to submit this grant tomorrow, (laugh) I'll need an answer today. But, um, what we thought, because it's such a short timeframe, is that this is, this is the only way if the whole dump was just freed that day. And, and I guess if over five thousand come in, the county then would absorb, you know, the rest of the tonnage.
So, the grant will pay the first five thousand, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Is that the amount that's left over from the twenty thousand? There's five thousand left, that's...
And they really want it to be used. All we can do is try to use it. We don't even know if people take advantage of it. I'm sorry, I'm...
Well, we had discussed, um, Kelly and I had discussed that even at the lowest rate where we cost share, that would get it down to twenty-five dollars a ton, which would have them collecting two hundred tons. That's a lot of material that we didn't really think maybe it would all possibly get used up like in one day.
So, is this similar, what Mitchell County used to do, did, do you know?
I don't know. It's the same funds that pay for Barnard's cleanup and Lincoln's, and Sylvan's.
When you say you're on a time constraint for the, the grant, to write the grant, does that mean just to have it out and available or to have a decision where it's being spent? Because...
I have to submit the grant tomorrow to the foundation because, uh, their deadline is tomorrow. So, if it's submitted after that, there's no, I mean, they just keep the five thousand.
I mean, would it be more feasible, I guess, opening it up for everyone would be fine, but it would...
It would be Lincoln County, the whole county for this, not just city or, you know... Beverly really didn't participate, that's why there's some fun. They thought it was Barnard, Beverly, Sylvan, and Lincoln. Maybe, you know, everybody would have a chance at Beverly being passed during the hunt. So, some of it could, um, potentially come from Beverly. It can come from any, anywhere in Lincoln County. That's how we would address it, that it's open to anybody in Lincoln County for the CD pit.
I guess I don't have an issue with it.
We just...
How are you, how would you plan on advertising it? Just economic development sponsoring a one-day, uh, free drop-off to the landfill, these items excluded?
Yeah, I'd be in probably the Lincoln paper and the Sylvan Lucas papers. And it'd be on Facebook, on our website pages on Facebook. Um, that's probably about the only way we can get word out there. And then it would be, we would pick a day in August with follow-up day being probably a Saturday in September.
Have you ever done anything like this?
No, not really. We did, we've had tire days before, back when KDHU used to provide some funding for tires, but...
Well, we did look at some of the tonnage from various houses that have been worn down. And you could add about three of them up to get it two hundred ton. Um...
It's gonna be a one-day deal, never the follow-up day.
With follow-up day, only if the five thousand, you know? I mean, if, if it's just a thousand left over, would we do it again? Probably not, but...
I don't think we can continue it for two weeks to someone in a project that needs to get it done that day.
Right. Right.
Would it be better to offer vouchers that people could apply for to use that, then you can control the amount of money?
Well, you don't know what the tonnage is. All you can do is guess on tonnage, and it's difficult.
But I mean, if I bought a val- or not bought, but if I applied for a voucher from you for two hundred dollars, and I can only bring my two hundred dollars worth, you know, I...
Right, but if they've got, okay, that, I guess what you're saying is... They're only gonna get two hundred dollars free then, and the rest they would have to pay for it, but...
Right, right.
I think it just makes it awfully difficult to do in a short amount of time.
And people might not realize how much, like, if you did two hundred dollars and they brought out a truckload, and the truckload was six hundred dollars, they might not have the four hundred dollars difference and not realize that they weighed so much.
And, yeah, and, and...
I think I, I, I like the idea of a free day though.
We talked about maybe trying to, you know, just have where they apply. But again, the tonnage was hard to figure out, to know how many you would accept and how many you wouldn't accept because you really have no idea what type of tonnage.
You gotta be sure people are dependable enough to do it, but...
Right, and this will be people doing it themselves. This won't be through a cleanup, this won't have other volunteers, it won't be through Lincoln's cleanup where they call everybody and say, "Hey, you know, so-and-so has a shed and we want to get it out there on that free day." It won't be through an organized cleanup. It's just, we're hoping that Joe Blow says, "I really intended on getting that down, but I didn't have time." And the other stuff was going on, and now I'm ready, and we'll just do it on our own.
You can't write the grant to go directly to the landfill so that they could disperse it over time instead of dispersing it in one long time?
I don't know, I don't know that. That's a law.
I'm saying the way you have it now, who are you writing the money to? When you apply for, when you...
If, if economic development gets the grant, the check would go to the landfill.
That's what I'm saying. So, if you gave that money directly to the landfill, that would give...
Well, but, right, but we don't get the check until this stuff is out there.
Mm.
If you only use four thousand, you're only gonna get four thousand.
Okay, okay. You don't just apply and receive the total?
No, they don't give you the money first. It has to be done, has to be completed, has to have a...
That's why you only got the fifteen out of the twenty, is what you're saying? Because that's what, okay, I see.
Because the other thing is, we don't want stuff that doesn't need to be in the CD pit.
Right.
We need it sorted.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want somebody scooping out in the dirt and...
Right, and all of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And all of that, and I think, I think most people that utilize the CD pit realize that the book list, all that information out there in the ads.
I don't know that we ought to have a clause in there that we can reject it. It's got a bunch of material that doesn't belong in the CD pit that we can reject it, or not.
It has to be standard, standard for CD.
Yeah.
And we can get all that information from the owner of the landfill.
One of the other things that we discussed was not allowing shingles for repaired roofs because of the fact that most of the, most of the people there getting damages on their roof are getting paid for disposal of the fees, and the contractors are getting paid for the fees. So, I think that might be why they moved it back into August a little bit to...
Right.
Give time for some of these roofs to get repaired. I don't know. So, that way we don't have contractors stockpiling.
So, what's the potential cost that the county has to absorb in a given day? Do we know what, well, we've never done anything like this, so we don't know what kind of quantity has gone through in a single day? Over and above five thousand?
They've had days when they've tore down four or five houses, haven't they? Three at least. They used to have cleanup or house tear-down days where they'd have three excavators going and probably Hillary trucks. When Dale was still here.
So, then the idea would be to advertise it within a short amount of time, that you're not going to get three months to prepare to haul all, everything in one day?
Then it'll rain, you'll have to have a rain day.
Well...
I can about guarantee it.
This, this year, you're probably right.
Yeah. Of course, then they quit tomorrow and not rain the rest of summer.
Well, what about putting a limitation on it for an individual drop-off? You know, you only have up to X amount. I mean, I honestly don't know what it, ha- you know, what a cubic...
Well, we could word it so that, um, it's mainly outbuildings or sheds or garages and not...
Not houses.
Not a house. And I really don't know why it's out there. We just, they just told us, "There's still money here. Figure out a way to, to get it because we want to get it out." So, that's what we come up with, is just have...
I guess if you were a business and you had a large truck, or you're an individual and you had your own regular pickup truck, if you... if you limited it to one load that day, and you wouldn't have someone, you know, getting their neighbor's dump truck and taking six loads, I don't know. I just don't know how to protect the county in that circumstance, but.
I like it along, if you don't tear down houses that you're gonna have, you won't probably go over two hundred tons. Start tearing down the houses as well.
Yeah, yeah.
You said five thousand dollars is equivalent of how many tons?
Two hundred.
Two hundred?
Yeah, it was twenty-five dollars.
At like our lowest reduced rate, not that we.
Yeah, so that would be like cleanup day, upgrades.
Yeah, where the city participates and the county participates. And even then, I think we probably have some room to budge with that, just depends on, you know, do you want your communities clean?
I think probably, I can go along with maybe restrictive, no houses and delegate more people the opportunity to get things out there. Because there, I mean, there's an individual that has multiple houses that are there. The two hundred tons would go pretty fast.
Mm-hmm, right.
Could you limit the hours between such-and-such AM and noon, or is that at least?
Oh, what is those? I don't even.
I think they're there till three on Saturday. You said a Saturday, right? I think they're, three is nine to four. Oh, four.
Nine to four?
Right now.
Okay. And in August and September?
They'll change until first of November and October, probably. They usually just get it till it starts slowing down out there, weather starts affecting people's projects and stuff.
I would say as long as there's some limitations on it. I mean, I don't know how you wanna word that, but.
I'm pretty confident if they don't do houses, they'll two hundred tons is the law if you're not tearing down a house.
What are the excluded materials from the CD pit?
What'd you say, Olivia?
What, what are the excluded materials from the CD pit? Tires and?
Concrete, rock, dirt.
Foundation materials, yeah. Home contents.
Wait, those are, those are allowable, you're saying?
No.
No, no concrete, no, no rock?
Yeah, they're, they're, there is no charge for concrete or block or dirt.
Okay.
But it goes in a separate place.
Okay.
You don't want it in to mix it sooner that you're gonna have to dig another pit, which is pretty expensive.
But you're saying any other sort of garbage besides, what, tires and?
No household trash.
The camp blinds and carpet and couches, you can't have any of that stuff.
Yeah, that's KDHU's ruling.
Right, okay.
CD pit.
You can only have like physical, I think you can have cabinets and like faucets and things like that, but you can't have anything that would be attached to the house, you can have it. And they limit the concrete, so then that way, yeah, they're not filling up. Because one, the very first cleanup that we had, they were putting everything in the pit, which was filling the pit. So after that, then they started telling them, can't.
They included trees, and the concrete block addition that was on the house.
And metal fans. I, I was driving a truck that.
They were even putting trees in it. And then they came in and complained about their bill.
So there's things that they can recycle and, and do for free, they just have to put a little legwork to it.
To, to divide it, yeah.
It's not that difficult.
But I think most people are used to that now.
Yeah.
And we could require them, if they're gonna bring something out, to contact Kerry with what they're bringing out so that he can make sure that he tells them what the regulations are. Or we can ask them to sign up saying they're gonna bring something out and then we could have a pamphlet for them or something that says what the regulations of the pit is.
All the phone numbers will be on there, we can get the landfills, phone numbers, phone number, contact information.
Yeah, contact.
Yeah, all the contact numbers.
Probably a good idea. Is it okay? What do you wish? You want a motion on that, Don, or?
If you want.
I'd just say that the economic development on a cleanup day, the landfill. With the CD pit up, yeah. At a twenty-five dollar ton rate. I have a second. I'll second. Any questions, comments?
Should we be, or maybe approving it? I mean, did you have anything written up already? Did, was there anything written or?
No, I wasn't going to do any labor on the grant and tell them I had an okay that we can make it happen.
So then what will be the restrictions? That'd be my discussion, just what are the restrictions before we?
I was gonna ask, were you gonna add that to the motion, the restriction of no houses?
No houses, yeah, we're gonna do that.
Yeah, I just put them in shed and out.
The only other thing that we charge for is tires, so do we wanna just
Organize.
Say no houses and no tires and not worry about just excluding to the CD pit or?
We could probably do another tire cleanup day for, I guess, KDHU to fund them, but they don't do it anymore.
Don't they have a tire shredding business in Hayes?
Tire company Concordia.
Concordia?
They, I think they still charge pickup, don't they?
They do, yeah.
They used to, KDHU used to have days where they would foot the bill for the, for a ton, how many tons of tires you took in that day, they would pay the bill. Very successful. That went away. Okay, any other questions? What do you got, Don?
Okay, that we moved to participate with economic development. Um, I'll put in a grant for a cleanup day at a twenty-five dollar per ton cost for items being disposed of at the CD pit restricted to no houses and no tires, so I'm gonna buy, I'll do. I'll, I'll clean it up, make it read, but is that basically what everybody has said?
Right, but are we agreeing to absorb the cost for an entire day or, oh, I mean, are we gonna limit the timeframe or?
Do it on that day.
I have no input as to what the potential could be there as far, you know, are we gonna get five hundred tons, more than double or?
If it's not houses, I just can't imagine that even half, I don't know, it's not even gonna probably come in.
And, and do we have a date?
No, we have lots of a day. We were just thinking.
If, if we don't get, say we get a hundred ton. Do we have to do the twenty-five dollars or can we do the regular charge?
Yeah, if you wanna just stop it at that one, one day, if you wanna keep it.
No, no, I meant, you know, she wrote in there twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
You know, but our regular fee is
Sixty dollars?
Sixty dollars. So potentially, we could get all the five thousand dollars with a hundred ton.
Right, on one, one day, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know, you know, I.
Or if you lower.
Do you have to put that in your,
No.
in your grant, how much we're charging, that's, that's my question is, you know, if we're only gonna get fifty, you know, and we charge sixty, we get the three thousand dollars.
I'm just putting it in the grant that.
So.
Without, without running into a second day, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, well, no, I mean, I mean, we might as well use as much of the grant as we can, because it costs us sixty dollars, basically.
Right, right.
You know?
I agree.
Yeah, take out the twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll just kind of play it by ear, you know?
That way we're actually giving ourselves our share rate.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we were. Well, we can get the regular rate and it just. And we real, we realize that if, you know, we're guessing that we can't get two hundred tons, what we're guessing on.
But if, if and then we do, you're only absorbing the difference between what you were gonna put out, that's the, I like that idea, yeah.
Okay, so moved to participate with economic development for a cleanup day for items being disposed of in the CD pit restricted to no houses and no tires for a one-day cleanup with an option for a second day, or do you wanna take that out?
I wouldn't put that in there.
Right? For a one-day cleanup?
Yeah.
To be later determined?
Yeah.
Yeah, date.
Be determined, because, yeah.
Right, because this is gonna give notice months in advance, potentially.
Obviously, Saturday is busy, we might, right, into the second weekend of September.
Questions, more?
We're just clear that it's going to be at our regular rate.
We have, yeah, well, we're gonna try and get to five thousand dollars. Yeah, I mean, yeah, if we, if we can do the regular rate.
But if we need to absorb, if we.
If we need to absorb, we will, we will absorb, I guess, what's left, you know?
But I'm saying, we're, we're, we're okaying this grant, not at the twenty-five dollars reduced rate. We're okaying it at the full rate, so that we are reimbursed fully.
But realizing we may have to absorb some costs.
Just realizing.
Which is less absorption at that full rate, yes, gotcha.
Okay.
And, and granted, if they say, okay, Sylvan had an extra bill that they hadn't submitted. Because I, I know what the amount was as of last Friday. I think Sylvan was all caught up with paying everything, so it should still be the five thousand. If something did come in, it might, it might be a few dollars less, a few hundred less, but it'll be right in the five thousand mark.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion is carried. Thank you, Barb. Oh, this, activate. The city of Barn, what is, what is that?
City building, the bank building.
Oh, bank building, oh, okay, okay. Where your city offices are.
City office.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
I agree.
Thanks.
Hey, Bob? Michael?
Morning.
Morning. Three days without rain.
I think that's about all the fur is gonna go. Everybody all bow and all.
Don't mention that word.
Scary, you don't have sunshine.
I'll just say you cut hay, so if I don't make it rain, well.
Yeah, that's what I thought last night, I was saying that to you. And the temp don't move nature again.
I just got a couple things for you. First being that OS one-ten down here on South Street, we got an engineering opinion on that and paper that we can put in with our bridge inspection to cover us, so the hosting could be removed on that. So they can start using it, I don't know if it'll go off the site.
They haven't been using the load to go off, they've been going on.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see it happen.
Yeah, yeah, he said it's gonna save them about a penny of motion on for eight minutes. The other thing is, of course, we've been having all kinds of rain that's just not getting let up for us. And we did have a box down in the Beverly area in which got washed and wall went out from under it and it's no longer possible.
Dirt road, gravel road.
Dirt road. The south of Lauren Palace, U two seventy, the south, south of Jaguar. Bob and I haven't done any of the set down, get a plan put together on how we're gonna approach it for sure.
Is it something we can put a shoe fly on for harvest or too deep?
Uh, it's not super deep. We may have something that we could put in there.
Temporary.
Temporary, but getting the other one out is gonna be a challenge. Might just have to leave a dozer on it and dry it for now, maybe.
Is that right all the time?
No, no, not all the time. I think it probably is this year, the way it's been out there.
Where are we gonna correct it? Think we'll have to, um. We need barricade that one, they'll press it out.
Yeah. Thursday night storm, we did have some more flash flooding occur. We had to get some employees out Thursday night to barricade and then begin Friday to check for damage and smooth up some of the damage and debris removal. We had a couple locations where we had some large trees on the road. We had a large tree blow over Thursday night, had to get that taken care of.
What was the flooding?
Mainly south of Vesper, southwest of town out here.
There's about a third or four inches of rain out there.
That's what I've heard, I think, of. Down by Donley's, there's some debris that we did remove there and down by where the Mars, a couple of large trees there, still something like that, so. Several places that went over there, but it was just, just ditch flooding, the streams and everything stayed in check, so. Uh, we're getting closer to getting the first phase of our signing private school roads program going here. We're supposed to have a pre-conference meeting on June seventh with KDOT. Time and place has been set, but I did receive another email this morning that the contractor himself's not gonna be there, so he's requesting a different date to be set, but I haven't heard that, so.
Might be important to be the third.
Yes, very important. That is scheduled to start here this summer. They said as soon as they get, I believe it was Grant County. Is the county ahead of us, and once they get down there, they're gonna move up to this one, so. That's pretty much all I have today.
I just got some more red stuff and some more wood house instead of the red here.
I forgot to ask David Doe, have we heard anything about the states turning in for their declarations, disaster declarations?
I have not heard from him, but one has said, um.
Yeah, right across the truck, it might be interested in.
Where's it located at?
Minneapolis.
Kansas?
Mm-hmm. I was close, I could find it there, I never.
How'd you find it?
Oh, I did, went down there. Been down to the eye doctor, come back to find, come by there and see it.
You have better luck on your road trips finding stuff than anyone searching on the internet.
Just drove by and see it sitting there, so I made a huge turn, went back, took some pictures and looked it over.
What are they asking?
Sixteen. Sixteen. Talked to him last night, he said he wanna come down and drive it, or check it out in the morning, give him a call, he made his out to the key.
Farmer?
Uh, he just bought the lumberyard there in Minneapolis.
Oh.
He bought this, kinda did delivery, he said he decided to go more than he really wanted for that little berry, that's one, so. He said, I just, just get it set and I'll use it, a couple of times, and.
There was some equipment that we had talked about, you were listing, going to list, have we listed any of that?
Yeah, we're waiting for our new motorators to get here, so we can list the motorators we're gonna sell at the same time.
Two of those?
Yes.
And then there was something else? From the beginning of the year, um, didn't we replace the payloader? Is that what we did?
Yes, we're gonna have two loaders, and we will also have the former well truck that does not run. I believe law enforcement has.
Have we had any look at that truck besides our own mechanics?
Yes, we've discussed it with local dealer here, B C Diesel, and then also the international dealer in Florida.
Well, as close as it is, I think you probably have to damn drive, see the, see the lot of things. Check it out, see what's next.
Heard any more of the blades?
It's on my list to call, Darren Morris.
The price isn't that bad, I don't think, for that kind of truck.
Yeah, beds almost brand new, right on there, he said.
It really kinda surprises me, as big as Murphy is, I mean, they're all for Ohio, all over the damn place, they don't have blades in the line in the factory on a constant basis.
I'm sure they have. They have something, some of their other storage locations are down somewhere. Good one ours, on our old, we should even wait until then, yeah.
You take a chance on the breakdown, that's what you're doing.
One of them blowing up or something, nothing, guy down there's another, she doesn't show you. Had wind from all Ohio, was it?
Where's this at?
Uh, the first one there, that holds a honk, south town up here. Boys got it fixed last week here. The other one's down north Beverly, my carches. It's an old stone arch in there, and it's a big old fell in there earlier, and Ron stopped by here last Monday and said, you know, I wanna take a look, and I had it all there in the middle room now, so you can still get by it, but. So we went down barricaded it. Probably end up, so I put a pipe or something in it, did it.
So, running along the side of the arch, you got?
No, it just, the whole arch is.
Oh, the arch itself is, oh.
Arch is all come apart, just fell down there. Did they add?
Key rod.
There's about ten foot on the lower end, that they before had seen that deck on, on there.
Oh.
That only leaves about six foot to drive on, and I'm afraid somebody will, not be hit their accident, move it over and get through to some bit.
You think we can tube it?
See if we can get a big tube in there, kinda measure up and see.
Who's been doing our stonework on our stone bridges?
Well, we've got some, some of the walls and stuff fall out, or nick repaired and stuff, and.
We usually, once a year, put a bridge out, a bigger one out to bid.
But I mean, just, just like, yeah, the, yeah, a tuck point, or even smaller sections that are coming loose, or deteriorating.
Typically, we typically do that ourselves.
Have we considered bidding out some of those, since we're busy with other things?
Always consider it.
Is there a plan on the table for that? I mean, I'm just thinking, the last time I drove around, um, the one on Union really needs some attention, or we're gonna look at it, a more serious issue with it later, and it's all stone.
Which one at Union?
Right before you get to eighty.
Oh, right there.
At the curve, it kinda.
The edge there, um. Yeah. I'd say we've got, here for about all the same condition, around one problem there. Can't get to them, but work on, on waters, running half full, trick all the time anymore, can't get in there to work on them anyway.
Well, I realize this season, but those aren't things that just happened recently, I mean, you know, there's, there's growth grown up over the edges and things like that, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't look at soliciting some bids for some stonework that isn't going to, you know, it has nothing to do with the actual structure of the bridge across, but mainly the exterior work on it, to put back up some of the edges, some of the walls and the retaining.
I mean, we've bid out ten or twelve so far, eighteen.
Last year?
Huh?
Last year?
Last year we didn't do one either, due to budget constraints, and.
We have been doing one or two here, from Red River, Dennis Cross does a lot of them for us, you know Dennis Cross?
Here recently, most of them, and then a couple other companies that, that want to.
Well, is that something we should advertise for, to look at?
We usually do, we pick out a bridge or two, and.
Wouldn't now be a good time to start working on that, so that over the summer, the work can, when it dries up, could that actually be done?
Potentially, I think it's gotta be done more towards the fall.
There's temperature restrictions and stuff like that on tuck point, and so.
But, yeah, we can put together which bridges we'd like to look at, and.
Yeah, that brings me to my next question, a list of bridges, in a.
I've got a list, anybody left me, but it's nothing official that I have sat down, but, you know, I can, there's about ten or fifteen bridges that are due for replacement.
Okay, and I mean, I'm even talking about, you know.
Repairs, too.
Well, yeah, and, and these many are, like you said, it's not, it doesn't qualify as a bridge if it's what, twenty foot span or less? Okay, so these are those, you know, and then we have stone ones, stones are different than the other structures, and, you know, separated by structure and or, and or, uh, traffic volume, you know, and this, the type of road that it's on. That one you had there was dirt, I don't know how well traveled that dirt road is in particular, but those kinda things.
Yeah, this one, that was a real high quality, 'cause they can't, yeah, they can go around some, but they can't get around and get to their property and stuff without using it, we have to hold it up on here for a while.
Where can we get a big map? A big map, not like the one, I mean, I know you guys, I was in the highway department, you have them hanging on the walls in cases. I'm talking a big map, like bigger than the one, than that billboard, the bulletin board that's behind you.
Probably a printing company, I don't.
Yeah, you'd have to go.
That's all the bigger.
Lincoln County's never had one?
Not to go that.
Nothing that big.
No, not really, huh?
I think that would be extremely helpful. I know, I was visiting with, um, oh, Ottawa County, a little bit, and that's something that they do. And I think it would just be helpful for you guys to prioritize a little bit, 'cause I know you just get, it seems like everything's just bombarding, and the weather just exacerbates the entire situation.
I'll be ready to put it, that's the main thing, and wall spaces.
Sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, pretty much, now about where they're all at, or whatever, pretty much, say. Biggest problem right now, just been the weather, helping us get anything down. So. This hasn't just been, like I said, didn't happen, or what happened this last week, it's been going on for a long time. Working on some, but it's hard to catch up, and they're all getting almost a hundred years old, about all the bridges around, and all of a sudden, they all decide this is enough, and, you know.
As far as our bridges go, they're qualified as, classified as bridges, I should say. Most of all of that's in the, uh, bridge inspection manual. You guys have a copy here somewhere, I don't know if each commissioner's provided one or not, I can't remember. But it'll tell you what road it's on, what it's made out of, what its span is, what year it was built. It's gonna tell you some maintenance needs that the inspector saw while they were there, you know. It's not gonna say that, okay, this is the next bridge that you probably ought to replace type stuff, you know, they don't list that. But they do have all that information in our bridge files, or inspection manuals.
What is the bridge crew working on now?
There, west of Lincoln, the old dirt road going out, west of Lincoln, a bridge there, old wooden bridge. There, it's on the inspection list, it's an hour list, it's three time. Tried to get it in a program here, up two years ago.
Yeah, that's not gonna qualify, you know.
Would qualify, because it's right on the intersection, and they were trying to in the intersection.
So what are, what is the bridge crew doing to it now?
Well, I'd have dirt cave in it, wash out behind the dirt boards on the, burning. This bridge has come down part, and it's left a gap between the plant dirt boards back there, and the dirt's coming out too, so trying to dig out and get it, or they can plug it back up and fix it. It's only rated three time. Everybody in the world keeps using it.
That probably hits the top of our list as far as bridges that can be replaced.
And how, what's the span on that one?
Thirty foot?
Twenty-eight, thirty somewhere, I can't remember exactly.
Tw- twenty-eight, did you say?
Twenty-eight, thirty foot somewhere, I don't remember exactly about that one, yeah. Got a senior pair in there, and two spans, and I think it goes over about twelve foot or fourteen, I can't remember.
So the repairs that they're doing now, is that gonna keep it operable, and, no?
Not structurally, no, this is just a thing that has to, just don't work, if somebody won't fall in.
Okay, okay.
They won't increase the weight running.
Is that the picture that you just showed us?
No.
No, but it's very similar to that.
Okay. So at what point is this commission gonna consider, uh, an investment in the highway department to address the bridge problem, because I, I don't hear on a regular basis any long-term definitive plan?
Michael and I are working on that right now, we're gonna meet last week, but I had to go out of town, but we've been talking back and forth, and he's been doing some research on pricing and stuff like that.
For our equipment?
Equipment, yeah. We intended on meeting last week, but I have to return, so we'll get together this week, hopefully. He's been doing a lot of labor, looking out for ideas, and he looks for equipment pricing and stuff like that.
And do we have all, all the positions filled right now?
We should have everything pulled from over.
Oh, right now, no.
And what, what have been our practices for summer help, just for grunt work, if that's what you wanna call it?
Years past, we have hired some people's seasonal help to do, uh, mowing. One year, there was an individual that helped out on the bridge crew. I guess we quit doing that when there was a lack of anybody even filling out an application here, God, that's probably been five, six, seven years ago. People just, they're wanting.
Different type of work?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Non-manual.
You know, and when there's seasonal help, usually if it's a rainy day, we'll send them home, and they don't care for that. Um, this year is one of those years where they do a lot of days where they're not making the income. But as far as advertising, it's been several years since we have. I believe last year we did it, we had, uh, some issues with an individual that was rather hard on us and equipment, and did some damage, you know, they had investment in the job, and they just.
We basically have one right now, we have an intern that went to summertime help, so.
Yeah. Yeah, same as full time, for the most part, he's doing a very good job.
You know, there are some things they can do, you can put it out on a mower, but if you gotta instruct them every day, and they're only gonna be here for two months, it kinda defeats the purpose.
I mean, I'm more, I'm talking more along the lines of on your feet and with a shovel, not necessarily, I mean, we need boulders picked up out of the ditches and off alongside of the roads, we need culverts unplugged, that's all manual labor that doesn't necessarily need any technical training. And if we're busy on our machinery elsewhere, there's no reason we can't have a couple younger guys that are even in school age, I mean.
Yeah, there's labor laws, you gotta follow the labor laws, I have to be eighteen, and, I mean, there's a lot of restrictions.
It shouldn't have to be eighteen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they do.
I believe to work for the county.
Operate equipment?
Yeah.
Not, like, I'm not talking equipment.
Yeah, like include driving and being a coworker, yeah.
Can't haul any.
Well, in my opinion, someone that's responsible should drop their, their butts off at the site, and then have them come back in two hours and have them do job A, take them to job B, you know, it's not something where we just let them free rein, I, I, I'm constantly hearing that we don't have enough help, I'm constantly hearing that we're always behind, I'm constantly hearing these things, but I'm not, nobody is coming up with a plan on what to do. I mean, a shovel and a, and a back that's in good shape would go a long way.
Basically have one person doing nothing, but going and moving them to this location, and moving them a half mile down the road, and then going back, so you're kinda defeating the purpose. Because you're gonna have to have one of your employees, if they're not capable of operating the vehicle or the equipment, somebody's gotta be there with them.
Well, no, I mean, I've been told by Michael, that each road grader operator is responsible for their own territory, their own route. And if that's the case, then that person could easily look over whatever crew is in their area at that time. I mean, I had someone, I had a citizen stop me and say that he unplugged the culvert, because it had gone for so long with, you know, out, being addressed, and I'm not blaming anyone. I'm saying, obviously, those kinds of things need done, and when they're trying to do a hundred miles worth of road, I mean, I'm over exaggerating, I don't know what his mileage is out my way, but to stop every time and unplug this, or move this boulder, that boulder, that's something that someone could go around and do countywide for quite a few weeks.
It's, it's, requires somebody to be with them, or go with them, and show them, and. That man, he's got plenty to do without doing that, he, he's gonna do that, he just, he can do get a often done for the car, or sign, post back up, or whatever himself, while he's there. Of your disposition is hiring somebody else to have to run around or follow them. And then in the past, they had some way back, from my, over the country, on moors, and down staff.
Have burners and folks that have been about it.
Sleep reading a funny book or something like that, and, and let somebody who's out with them all the time, and. So you didn't really gain a lot, but going that way either.
Would you stay then, and I can inter, inter?
Yes, I'll let you talk.
Uh, on the road where you got.
On the road where you got water running across your road, okay, nobody's gonna come to show. So I did it for show, but we got a bad problem. You wanna go and check it out, go check it out with your car, but I don't think you'll probably make it. And that's gonna be running for a while, there's evidently a culvert there.
Where are you, where are you at?
Okay, you go up a, up a highway and pike and you have a, and you turn and you go north on the, the little stretch on Seventieth and you go to Plum, we worked on Plum. It's not running across your road there, but it's on, on the west there, right on the Waterington Grant Township and the part of it's in, in Hanover. Actually, that's terrible, we liked going that road all the time. I quit going on in my car, but I got out and dug and tried to get the water, I can't find the culvert. That'll, that'll run until the springs and water quit. It's, it, it, it's dangerous for somebody, but I'm gonna have to do something more than once. And that's the next thing, people are gonna say, well, farmers are doing something. Yeah, this farmer's gonna do something because he wants to get through there part of the time, but I gotta go around now. But that's just, when you get down to the end where you got going across, going across your roads and culverts are plugged up. I, I don't know what, I don't know what the solution is, just, I guess you're just gonna tell farmers just do what they can do. And that's what they're gonna do anyway, but they, just tell them, have at it, we're, we're finished with you.
Well, the biggest problem with the culverts that I've been in here is the more and more no-till, more and more crop residue. That's why we estimate culvert supply. We didn't have, we didn't have culvert problems twenty years ago like we do now, it's crop residue.
This is all draining off of, off of grass, we're going across this road, wide spring, maybe there's no culvert there, maybe needs to have one. It's something to look at, when... Just check out some of those places. It's, it's, it's a four-wheeler pickup can get through, okay, probably, don't go in the car.
You know, I think the restrictions on under eighteen is that they can't haul anything. Can a person clean out a culvert with just a pickup? How much debris is normally that they're having to pick up or do they just disperse it in the ditch?
It depends on the location, I think. A lot of them, it's a lot easier to have either tobacco or any excavator or something so you can actually haul that material away so it does not cause a siltin' problem while you're there.
Yeah, if you just pile it up, the next time water comes up, it's just gonna wash back in.
But the project progresses. They go, they find all the ones that they can dig out by hand that are small, if they were marked on the map. Then they go to the ones that are slightly bigger, that they can at least expose and assess the problem, pile the stuff up on the side. And the next round through, they go through with the equipment that is necessary to remove it, et cetera. I mean, you have to have a game plan where you start small and you work bigger. And along the way, they're walking, picking up, throwing these boulders into the whichever vehicle, you know, on the, the bed of the, the flatbed or, you know, into the pickup, whatever they're driving, they haul that up to somewhere where that can be utilized. I mean, there's a process by which we could be a little more efficient and take some of the pressure off. I keep hearing that these entire routes are to be monitored, maintenance and bladed by one person. And that we can see is not happening. And for some reason, it's being portrayed that the people that are complaining are blaming these blade operators. And now there's this whole uproar saying, oh, everybody's so hard on the county employees and the poor county employees. That is not the problem. The problem is the plan of attack, or I should say the lack of one. Because you can't blame the person who constantly has too much to do, yet it does resonate as if it's their problem because we're being told that it's their territory and it's their job to stop and clean up this and pick up that. And how are they to operate their machinery and do all of that? And then you get a flooding situation, so now we have compiled issues. I mean, and if I just keep hearing, well, we can't do this, we can't do that, then what can we do? I think that's maybe what Mr. Weirman was addressing, what can we do then? If none of the suggestions have been brought?
First thing we need to do at Howard is see if there's even a culvert there.
But again, you're attacking one single job. I'm talking about a plan because it's a, it's a countrywide, a rural issue among a lot of these roads. It's not just we pick one spot.
If you're gonna start a project like that, you might as well hire the full-time people instead of a couple of guys in the summertime.
I don't think we need to hire a full-time person to pick up rocks and throw them in the back of the truck.
Well, you're, what are you gonna gain by doing it six weeks out of the year?
A lot compared to doing it nothing.
Well, if you got that big of a problem, why don't you hire a full-time person that's doing it all the time?
Because it's not...
One of the skateboarders, tobacco or whatever he needs to do.
It's a minimum wage and a young person's job with a good back to go around and throw rocks in the back of the truck. And if, if nobody wants a high school job in the summer to do something like that, then that's a serious problem we need to address socially. But physically with, with our situation in the county, I don't understand why that's not a viable option. I mean, I scooped poop in the barn when I was young and never complained and I didn't even get paid for it. So I don't understand why that's not possible to have someone pick up rocks and scoop dirt out of the ditch or in the culvert, I should say.
That's really not the society anymore.
But we need to combat that. As a group, we need to stand up and say, that's not acceptable, we are offering these summer jobs. And if we catch you sleeping on the job, goodbye, who's next on the list? You know?
They're good, most of them are gone as soon as you get them a shovel. How much time they're gone anyway, if they don't stay because they don't wanna work. Don't wanna sit there and play with a phone or computer or something like that, they don't wanna play on the shovel now.
There, there are a lot of...
We've had a lot of people...
There are a lot of kids though that wanna work, but there just isn't, I mean, there's limited job opportunities in our community. I'm just gonna tell you, I come from a, I have a son that, that struggled and, and finally found a farmer that was hiring. But there's limited job, even the city doesn't allow them to mow anymore because of the operating of the equipment. So some of those jobs are gone, I mean, I'm not saying it's a great idea, but I'm not saying it's a bad idea either. You may actually end up having some kids that would be willing to come back after they get out of high school and come back and work during college.
And I think there's also an issue of community service. I mean, we could be engaging in some community service programs where we can compensate or come up with a plan to do something like that. But, I mean, you're right, Don, there are kids that are willing to do that, but we have to actually make an effort to find them. And we can't be afraid to say, you're not doing your job, this is a real-world lesson, goodbye, you know, on with the next person. It's, it's not a charity event, but it certainly is something that we should be taking advantage of. I mean, like you just said, there aren't a lot of opportunities. And I don't believe that these things that I'm talking about are full-time nor high-wage compensation situations.
The question that we would have to figure out is number one, do we have the equipment for them to operate? Number two, can they, can they drive a truck? Cause I know there's, there's regulations and I have them sitting on my desk when I think about it. But before, before that can even further the conversation, we have to know if we even have a pickup for the, an extra pickup for somebody to drive out.
Wouldn't it be a safety-sensitive position, driving?
I don't, that's what I don't know. I know if you're towing something, they cannot tow, but I think that they can drive like a normal pickup. They can't, I think it's limited to its size, like they can't drive a big pickup. And I think they have to be sixteen to eighteen, but let me just, I know they're sitting at my desk. If not, I know where I could go about.
I used to run a roofing crew in the summer too and have five or six high school and college-age kids on it. It touched, they changed the laws around it where they couldn't be over so high off the ground, they couldn't operate a saw, they couldn't do this, they couldn't do that. And yeah, you can let them do it, but workman comp doesn't cover anything that's outside of, of the law. So anything happens to them, it's coming out of your pocket, so.
I understand what you're saying and you're not wrong, but everybody screaming liability all the time doesn't help us. And you know, if we don't as a community...
It's a fact, it's a fact.
But if we don't as a community take some sort of stand against that, it's only going to get worse. I mean, I'm not saying we go and do things that are quote-unquote illegal, I would never suggest that. But what I'm saying is you use to the maximum potential the ability that you have to undermine ridiculous laws. And, and I'm not saying that we have them do something that is even going to put them in harm's way. But I don't see how driving a pickup, operating a shovel and picking up things is a liability. And who's to say, I mean, I've been hired on plenty of jobs where I had to provide my own transportation. Drive out there and park your truck and you do this mile of road. And if it's not done by X o'clock, goodbye. You know, I don't understand where the management strategy is, are we too worried about being friends with everyone?
I've seen two or three people down the road since I've been back here, showing up doing their work.
Full-time people?
Yeah, so like I said, it's not just that.
But then we're gonna have to take on...
That's okay, we're going on, we're not worried about that, no.
But we're gonna have to take on the responsibility that there may be a high turnover. You know, sometimes there's a quote-unquote cost of doing business. And if we're gonna operate the highway department as a business, so to speak, then that's, that's an operating cost that we need to consider. And I'm not quite sure...
Yeah, you're starting that liability. This is a harder time, I've seen the full-time people, like, oh, I slipped and fell going down the ditch cleaning out this pipe. My back's up, gotta get liability. I crawled under this bridge, the spider bit me. I've gone through all kinds of those things, it's silly, crazy thing, but still, we're held responsible for laws anymore.
No, Don, I probably need five copies, gonna make another copy. Now, mind you, these are from two thousand and seven, so I'd have to look and see if they were outdated.
Okay, but right off the bat, what this is telling me is that sixteen-year-olds are the exemption. Because this says what jobs are fourteen and fifteen-year-olds permitted and what jobs are fourteen and fifty, fifteen-year-olds prohibited. So right there, we're drawing the line at sixteen.
They're neither less for sixteen, but it continues some more.
So they're prohibited from manufacturing occupations, mining occupations, processing such as foods, commercial laundries, dry cleanings, occupations requiring the performance of duties in workrooms or workplaces where goods are manufactured. It's under manufacturing.
Do either counties have probably a similar problems or they have programs, similar programs? That they want?
They have problems. They have, they have the same problems we're having. The roads, the waters over the road, the culverts are flooded. The farmers are trying to get the, with the spade, trying to get it just over Mitchell County. One of my friends was out trying to get the water and running over his road and the county crew came up behind him and helped him, but they didn't solve the problem. There's so much water coming out of the hills that you just can't...
You can hardly drive through the pastures right now.
Yeah.
Stuck.
Yeah. You don't have to go, you have to go to the neighboring counties to encounter all the problems we're having, basically.
Yeah, friends down the lane down, it's, it's, they've got the same problems down there. Clay County and Grandson, they have the same problem.
Is there a separate list for sixteen-year-olds and up?
There's fourteen, fifteen.
Um, well, we'll look and see if it was on the list. I guess my biggest frustration is I just keep hearing that everything's fine. Everything's fine the way it is, we don't need to do anything differently, quit attacking...
I don't think anybody ever said everything's fine the way it is.
So then what is the plan? Because it seems like every time there's a discussion, there's this defensiveness about the way things are. And to me, that means status quo equals sufficient.
I think anything you do comes down to one thing, that's money, how you wanna spend the money. Everything boils down to money. And it's how you spend the money to get the most bang for the buck, I guess. I mean, it's... If the money was there, you could do a lot of things.
But the idea isn't what if, the idea is what is. You know, what is available for us to do? What are some of the issues that we can manipulate with, with what we have now? I certainly believe that, in my opinion, there should be some kind of substantial investment into our infrastructure in, in the way of roads and bridges as far as whether it be equipment or, you know, contracting things out for a certain amount of years, knowing that it's going to be a certain expense to us to catch up on different things. Though, I think that should be part of a grandioso plan for the department. However, we do have the means to do smaller things in the, in the loo of time between that happening. Were you still looking for the sixteen?
I'm having Deborah, cause yeah, I thought that was in here, but, and then I'm searching online myself, so. I know they can't operate, can't operate any equipment that has a motor. And I know they can't tow.
A motor?
A motor, so they can't operate a weed eater, they can't operate a mower.
At sixteen?
Yes, sixteen to eighteen-year-olds, yeah, I know.
That is absolutely, that is, that is absolutely ridiculous.
They can only be like less than two foot off of a ladder, there's all kinds of stuff, it's just nuts.
Well, that's what this is saying, jobs for fourteen to fifteen-year-olds are prohibited in construction except for office or sales work. So you're expected to run the shovel while your sixteen, while your fourteen-year-old does the sales for your business. That is absolutely just incredible.
Well, it just, it limits, it limits kids' ability to have jobs, it really does. You know, when, when you talk about where are they available to work at, the grocery store, Mighty Mark? Or not Mighty Mark, Pizza Hut. And what, what cracks me up is Pizza Hut, they can run the ovens, but at the grocery store, they can't run anything. And I would think an oven is a heck of a lot hotter than a microwave. They can't even step foot in the kitchen if there's a microwave at the grocery store, it's ridiculous. That's one of the funnies when my daughter came home, that she told me was, I run a microwave at home, but I can't run it at the store.
But these are the kind of restrictions that are really affecting the entire state and making things impossible.
These come from na- national law, passed down to the state, they're not...
Hey, Michael, what was the, uh, bridge at Flats over by Warren, how it's house?
It wasn't a bridge, it's just a box culvert.
Just box culvert?
Yeah.
And where was that?
South of his house, two seventy eighth south and Jaguar.
All right, thank you. Figure all that, grab a little fire.
Sheriff's offices were over.
Anything else, guys? I think I've got a lot more. Trying to catch up on the hot water problems.
Not talking any big chances of rain for a while though, twenty, thirty percent?
No, I think they're getting up to eighty percent, but not flooding quantities, so that's one positive. But it's not the positive to get things dried out to where we can get to work like we need to be. get to work like we need to be.
What do you, Dawn, are you aware of any um laws regarding any volunteering?
Doesn't matter.
Uh, yeah, I think-
No difference.
I-
If you're covered by work comp, there's no difference between volunteering and-
I think they still follow all the regulations.
Even if you're in trouble and you're doing community service, you still are covered under work comp.
And if you're asking like for a farmer to volunteer, to take his equipment, go do some work is what I'm-
Well, yeah, I was actually, yeah, you're right, I was wrong that way.
I think there, there's ways around it. They, you know, that, I'm not hundred percent sure on this, so you can't hundred percent quote me, but I think that it can be allowed, but you have to give written permission with details. And then you have to assume the liability for everything at that point. You know, so, how far that liability goes. Farmer says, oh, my transmission went out on my tractor, I was doing work for the county. You're buying me a new transmission. You know, you just fall back on all of that stuff. But I would have to do some more research in the state statutes to be able to confirm that. I might be wrong.
Yeah, I know, to the state statutes, it is nothing to be done, you ain't supposed to put up a sign, you got tomatoes to sell them right away. And you can't clean out a ditch or put stuff in a ditch or block it right away with hay bales or machinery or anything. It's all, that stuff falls under statute, tangent statutes, it's against the law, dude, so you're limited to get people out. A lot of people go out there and do work on it right away, that shouldn't even be after because the liability factor there is mainly against the law, so that's-
Liability is the reason why the laws were ruled. It's not because of anything else.
Under seventeen, they can't operate another vehicle? Or under eighteen, they can operate another vehicle?
Different world.
Yes, it is.
That's fifteen, I'm driving a truck with a combine on it going through Oklahoma, that'd be Canadian mine, ours.
And some of these boys do too. I mean, we're fortunate enough to be in an area where that is still the commoners' accepted mentality. So, we need to find a way to capitalize on that, instead of just let this generation pass us by and then next thing you know, the, the people that are sitting here are in a worse position than we're in. I mean, if there is no pushback from us as a community, even within our government organizations, that just keeps rolling on into the future. And that's honestly the primary reason why I'm even interested in things like this. Because we are allowing that to happen by not doing anything against it and just saying, oh, well, that's what the state says, that's what the feds say. It starts at a local level.
Pushback, that's my question.
How do we push back?
Paying a big fine when the state comes in and fines you for having that person do it.
No, that's the exact exclusionary attitude that leaves people at a loss in saying, so what do we do? We're just gonna do it ourselves, and then there's this rebellious um version of what's gonna be going on. What you have to do is have a collaborative opportunity where, let's say, okay, we have a, we have a, a specific day where we ask farmers to volunteer, look, this is the day we're gonna do it, everybody's gonna sign a waiver. We are all under the good faith understanding that this is not some opportunity to put the county in jeopardy. You know, the way things are going-
That's worse than good old boys. When you go back to good faith, how can you assume that this is intentional? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just a little skeptical. I, I understand where you're coming from in a perfect world, but very sadly, this is not a perfect world anymore. I see where you're coming from. I would love to see it work, I just am not envisioning it right now.
I guess maybe what you're not understanding is that the situation as is, which is called the status quo, is prompting people to have the attitude that they will take that chance purposefully to put liability on the county because they are that frustrated. That is not a good thing. When you open up the door to have a collaborative communication with the people that we serve, because we, are we all under the impression that we are offering services? I mean, do we understand that?
To some extent, yes.
To some extent, could you clarify that?
I think just clarify your question a little better, please.
Do you understand that the government is being paid to provide services?
Yes.
Okay, so we are servicing the people that pay our bills. And within that within that relationship, there has to be an understanding of what everyone wants. And I think for us to just continue saying, well, those farmers, all they want are perfect roads. And for the farmers to say, well, all they do is waste our money. You know, that is going to continue the divide. And that has been happening. And this isn't something that just recently happened in the last five or six months that I've been around here. This is years and years of compilation on those issues. And for us to just scream liability is not gonna help. And eventually, some of these other rural communities and rural counties will catch on. So, the way that you, the way that you undermine the restrictions that have been placed on us is by doing something that works and proving it works and then advertising that it works. You know, it's, it's just like any, any other endeavor by an entrepreneur. You do something and you prove its value and you prove its worth and then it catches on. And that's how you create the pushback. You know, we don't necessarily have a group that's uh has enough time to spend or, or resources to spend to go to Topeka and lobby every time that there's an opportunity. But when you create something that other people want to then also facilitate in their realm, that's how you have a movement. It's not necessarily something that happens overnight. But if we don't change our approach, it's, it's only going to get worse.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you at all in what you're saying, but you're still gonna assume the liability and you're still gonna take a chance to get the fines and this and- You know, I completely quit my roofing crew because of laws, cost me a lot of money. Cost a lot of kids a lot of jobs, but I didn't take a chance anymore. One of them fell off that roof, I could pay the rest of my life. You know, you're just gonna take that chance. You can say that you disagree with it and everything all you want to.
Um, Deborah found where it says at the bottom of this, there's, you know, some exemptions. Um, and we probably really need, would have to call Department of Labor to find out because she had found a portion and she's trying to get it to print, but it won't print, that says that they can't work on road right away. So, um, we'll have to see exactly what that means. Whether that means the person that's driving the vehicle on road right away, or if that means physically working on the road right away. And that would be for anybody under the age of eighteen.
All this is up like we found years ago in construction work, we're building roads all over the state. You know, somebody that's not experienced with all this stuff. You know, well, we can take care of that, we can cover up any mistakes that make yourself. But it took two of us to try to straighten up what one person messed up, we spent more time re-correcting problems that they created. And if we just went out and done it ourselves, we'd have qualified help, we have. But it's, I'd say it's not an easy situation, just giving some help. People don't understand that all this discations and stuff you have to go through right now. So, this is gonna come back into that too, so. Well, we'll end up.
Okay, anything else for those guys? Move on and get our bills paid, be done. Thank you, guys, have a good week.
Thank you, thank you.
Have you given me the tree or? Did you give me the tree or do I have to buy it?
They'll sell it to you if you wanna pay it, boy. I figured we wouldn't do anything with it.
Nah, don't worry about it, don't worry about it, yeah, don't worry about it. Hope it was in the right way, wasn't it?
If your tree fall on our road, we'll send you a bill for taking it off.
It fell a little bit on the road, we took the excavator out there.
Yeah, I see, I went, I went by there, yeah.
They set it back up for you?
Huh?
I got a diagram for that.
No, that's just one less, a half a dozen or a dozen of them down that road that eventually gonna do that. It suckers. Thanks, guys. Glad somebody stopped me and told me, 'cause I probably wouldn't have went down there.
Yeah, I hope if it rains, it just rains in the evening, so my daughter can work.
She cooling the-
Cooling, yeah.
Do they give forty hours or not?
No. Um, normally what they do is there's seven of them this year and then they try to kinda, it appears, yeah. She gets about four days a week. Last year was bad, you had to clean a lot.
So, this Pinewood Management voice notification is at that?
Um, does it say at the end who it's for? I think that's the fire departments.
Oh, oh, yeah, probably is, yeah.
But I'll look.
Yeah, probably is. It's probably yearly.
'Cause I don't think that's what Davidson's called.
W P agency?
Yeah, that's what I believe. I used to, it was called Pinewood sometime?
Pinewood, yeah, Pinewood Management is what it's called.
Well. Maybe I don't know who my password is.
Why is the wifi here sometimes on and sometimes not?
Um, because we don't have the greatest internet, but it's far better than what it was with AT&T.
That's just no signal when it doesn't show?
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes it's dropping, and sometimes it's the firewall, um, too much traffic.
Wow. When are we gonna hear back from that company that wanted to do the-
I think we're working on that, um. I think the health department wanted to try out the AT&T universal a little bit to see-
Have they had it yet?
Well, we finally got it installed maybe two weeks ago.
They had a whole dugout back behind her now?
I think Landon was about to go start, start reading that, I'm just gonna tell you.
She was gonna, uh, over the new?
Yeah, they could, they said they could install it, but they wouldn't install it. And I finally told her, I said, well, give them an ultimatum, that we'll go someplace else. And so, she called them up and told them if it wasn't installed by Friday, we were going someplace else, so.
And they brought it?
Finally, yeah. But I guess she-
But what has been the cer- what has the service been like since it came in, do we know?
I don't know. They haven't called and complained, so. We'll hope that it was happily decent. Okay. I'm gonna remember where I wanna go. I don't think I'm gonna go there. We posted checks.
Is this, uh, is this the end of the month as well, we're doing all that today, right? Okay.
Don't you have it there?
I, I have it in my phone, I-
Oh.
Because you gave it to us last week, right?
No.
They would've emailed it to you.
Oh, it's right here in front of me, what am I doing? I did get it emailed, but, thank you.
It might be easier to read.
Well, that's what I thought, well, I'm gonna have to left it out.
Well, okay, I'll look at it.
Dax, Chris, you shouldn't, you're a baby.
Yeah, it is. Um, I'll show that Pinewood one was the fire district's, in the ambulance service paging.
Is that a year old?
Yes. I should just go craft those in voices in case you guys have questions.
I think, I think that's all there is. Didn't have an idea I was going home.
Is health, health department when it says the category? Is the health, health department, when it says the category?
Uh huh.
So, just out of curiosity, it says like sunshade from the health department. Is that a commodity for their office?
It said what?
Sunshade, I'm guessing that's sunscreen?
Sunshade, maybe for vehicles.
Probably, maybe one for cars, one of those things for the cars, how much was it?
Oh, like in the window?
Yeah. Cause they leave it parked out on, set out in the sun all the time, so. Don't have garage. I don't know if that's what it is.
I'm just, just asking out of curiosity what the?
Dawn can look it up and see what that's for. I'm just guessing, I don't know.
What is this life insurance company? Leaders Life Insurance? It doesn't say where from, it just.
Probably payroll deduction, payroll deductions, I would guess.
Oh.
They have Aflac, I'm sure we'll be able to say.
I saw the Aflac one.
Ah, but. We could payroll deductions through policies that. Kinda use to sponsor, do sponsor or whatever. Something with a Washington Beach or something, I'm not sure. Washington National Insurance, twenty-five oh.
Is there a reason that we're buying things like staples for the nursing home?
Uh, depends on what kind of staples, like wire and stuff.
It was only four dollars and eighty cents, so it couldn't have been.
Out of the building's wire.
Hmm, yep.
I would guess it's for wiring or. Just not like staple things.
Had you ever considered the thought that it might be more productive for our own citizens to subsidize their costs to the nursing home rather than paying for things like staples for the nursing home? Whatever type of table they may be.
Might as part of the maintenance deal, they furnish the maintenance money on.
I mean, I'm just saying, you know, for future situations, if we're gonna consider staying involved in that business, you know. Have you ever considered using that hundred thousand dollars to actually help the people that live here? On a, on an individual basis rather than paying the bills for every little nut and bolt in the facility? Because at some point. You know, when the greenhouses go in and the, and the people get moved into that new facility. If the county wishes to remain involved. To help the taxpayers that have lived here would be to subsidize their cost, not necessarily to continue owning a facility for them.
Well, I guess, as long as there is no agreement on what's gonna happen with the old facility at one time, I believe. He insinuated that if he took the lease on it, that he would take, once the conversion was done to assisted living, that he would assume the maintenance of the facility, but.
That was, that was in one of the presentations, yes.
But there is, you know, there is no deal on the old facility, that was one of the talking points.
I guess I'm just confused as to what, you know, what the county has agreed to pay for, because like I see, again, under the nursing home, you know, cleaner and cartridges, and those to me are disposable items that the business needs to use to run its facility. Not necessarily a cost that the county should have to incur. I know you're gonna say I'm nitpicking, but at what point do we draw a line with where the responsibility is, because if I rented my home from you, I wouldn't expect you to buy my window cleaner.
I guess I'd have to know exactly what it was, before I could make a determination.
I mean, I know specifically, we had a conversation in here early in the year that said, we were not going to be, um, purchasing. I don't know if you remember, but we did have a conversation, there was a, a bill from either the grocery store or Dollar General for food, and we said we weren't going to provide that, I believe it was for EMS. Do you remember having that conversation? We were gonna draw a line between.
I think it was emergency management. No, it wasn't EMS, yeah.
So you know, if, if those are the kinds of things where we're drawing the line, I think there should be some clarity.
Well, sometimes, the actual purchase isn't exactly what shows up on here, so you kinda have to go back and look at the ticket and see exactly what it is.
I'm just saying.
Because lots of times they'll pick out one thing that is on the ticket.
But if it says, if it says cleaner at all, and it's, it's a cleaner being used for the nursing home, I don't see that that should be a billable expense to the county for owning the facility.
So I guess I'd have, you know, I'd have to look at the ticket and see what it was. We have a dollar for it, I guess, but.
This copy of the lease for the attorney, is that the nursing home lease?
Do what?
It says, copy lease from the attorney's office for a hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents, does that mean it's the nursing home lease or?
Are you saying that where?
Uh, that would be page sixteen. And there, there's another from the same US Bank Equipment Finance, I don't know who that is, do you know who that is? Copy lease DC, I don't.
That's the copier, copier lease.
Oh, a lease for the copier itself, okay, I see. Are we leasing it because there's a maintenance plan?
It's a, they have a per, most of them have a per copy charge, I believe, and they maintain it and furnish the income.
So that's the clerk's copier and the attorney's copier? Is that? DC is the part.
DC, that was District Courts.
Oh. So do we have the same thing for the other offices?
I'm not sure how they're set up, they're set up somewhere.
Yeah, it's by the copies somehow, but Dawn can tell you.
Dawn, do we have our leases from the copiers through the same company, all of them?
No, um. District Court and County Attorney have, I think, the same company now.
Yeah, I just saw that.
The, uh, ambulance service, I think, is through Xerox. And like the courthouse copiers is through Key Office where we bought the copiers from. I think District Court, County Attorney and the ambulance, though, they lease theirs, so it's like a lease payment slash copy count.
What is West Group Payment Center?
It is for Jennifer's subscription to the government select on West Law, I think that's where she gets all of her forms from.
Is that a yearly or?
It's whenever she uses them. It says monthly, monthly charges. But I think if she doesn't get on there and use them, then she doesn't get paid.
Who's Darrell Miller?
That is the, um. Jewel County Attorney.
Did he do some, did she hire him to do something for court?
Um, yeah, she has a conflict of interest sometimes, but let me look and see specifically.
She does, they, Jewel, Mitchell, Lincoln, they all help each other out on, they have conflicts on.
Yeah, and it might be one of the other cases that she has.
Sometimes they handle child need cares and stuff too, don't they?
Sometimes, this one looks like he's covering, he's doing something that she might be considered to have a conflict of interest in, but it doesn't say what case. So it might be a juvenile.
Or if they're gone on vacation or out of town, they get one of the other county attorneys to cover for them and stuff, and it's.
The other question I had, I was asking about. What, what are we paying as far as expenses of the nursing home, because I saw some things on here like cleaner and, uh, cartridges, which I don't know what that means, but.
Phoenix supply.
Oh, those, I know what those were, uh, the cartridges are like the inserts to faucets. They call them cartridges, like if they're leaking, um, because they had a couple of like returns and then replacements, cause they didn't send out the right parts, Phoenix used them. Yeah, they just say cartridge, but that's what, what they said they were, was the faucet thing that you're so. Um, I can, Hannah has report by department, I'll just go get some more. Looks like there was some toilet seat holes too, toilet seats, buildings.
This says this, um, trade skid steer, eight hundred dollars, does that mean we traded in for a new one this year?
Yeah, we get one, a new one every year, isn't it? Every year we get a new skid steer.
We're on a lease type deal within, we got a brand new skid steer every year for eight hundred bucks.
And how long does that last?
A year.
I mean, how long does that deal last?
Oh, I don't know.
The last one was five years, right?
Yeah. One of them is the mini excavator and one of them is a skid loader. That's a, that's a good deal, it's, it's with Bobcat out of Dodge City, isn't it now? It used to be in Slimer, didn't it, didn't we go to Dodge City, cause they was cheaper, so, seems like we changed gears.
We're limited on the hours, but usually we go over anyway.
Yeah.
Thousand hours or something.
Talking about a sixty or seventy thousand dollar piece of equipment that can be used for six hundred dollars a year, that's pretty cheap. Compared to sixty thousand dollars.
We can't, can't buy into anything, no, we traded in an old machine. So they got, I would say, they won thirty thousand dollars. And so, and this lease starts, we have nothing.
Starts here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we have, we have to buy back into it at a, at a, at a larger amount. It's hard to figure those numbers out away, what you're really gonna have at the end of the, the five or eight years, but right now.
We've been doing it for probably ten years or more. Even leasing piece of equipment that's used constantly for six hundred dollars a year, that's pretty cheap.
She said, what was the original buy-in cost?
Hmm, twenty something, I don't remember.
When we started the Bobcat deal. It was too good to be true, I don't think. Cause I questioned it.
Was it through Bobcat?
Bobcat is Slimer, we started, but it's been ten years ago probably or something. Since Steve and I was here.
One of them, one of them was a mini excavator, I don't think we started it all that long ago, probably, but.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Skid motor, we did.
Did quite a while.
Thirteen thousand six thirty-eight is what we paid in two thousand and seven, have we done about one?
Probably.
Yeah, at least.
That was about ten years ago, I think.
And did you trade in the Bobcat in the beginning?
Yeah.
So that had value too, so it wasn't thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand plus the Bobcat.
It was an old Bobcat.
Yeah, based on value.
Reason we got rid of it is cause it's.
They still have value though.
Okay, are we ready to approve the bills and payables?
Sure.
Need a motion?
I'll move to pay the, um.
Payables and?
Yes, to approve the accounts payable and approve the payroll for the month.
Can I have a second?
I'll say it.
Any questions about what we're doing? Um, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I was in Concordia on Tuesday, I met with Harry Camel. Did he send anything this week, Dawn? I didn't, he thought he would have it within a few, wouldn't take long to do it, but I told him next Monday it'd be soon enough.
To do what?
To have an estimate on the generator.
Generator project.
Okay.
That you sent me, good, good. He had most of the work done, he said.
Well, that's great.
Would, would it be possible to get a new generator?
To save costs?
If there's one out there, it's pushing to probably be in there.
Uh, somebody's on it, uh, the, it's on a certain, like, one.
Is there another one?
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know how big it is, but, uh, the, I can't remember.
He put the SATS on there.
Two hundred fifty K, I believe.
Which report? You gave it to me, didn't you?
I think so.
Well, I just gave you my report.
Oh, it's yours? Yeah, no, you can have it back.
Do you have anything, Dawn?
Uh, we have that tax abatement.
Oh, I have a tax abatement here for Barnard. I need a motion to approve it.
I need to approve tax abatement.
Is there a second?
What is it?
For the city building.
That office building we asked Barnard about.
Have a second?
Been taxed.
I'll second it. Any questions?
I'd just like to see it.
No, I'm, I thought you looked at it.
No.
And they will have, I'm working on the list of tax abatements for solid waste disposal fees, but apparently Silver passed a ruling that anybody that receives city, some kind of city service, maybe utilities for sure, I forget what Jennifer said, will be billed solid waste collection because they have people that are sending out trash and random, and picking it up and they weren't paying for it. So anybody that receives service, so she said she had had a lot of complaints because they've already paid for the solid waste fee and I told her that if she sent me a list, I'd identify those that we have on solid waste and we'll do abatements for the proration for the year to at least help them out without six dollars per month. So, working on that, but hopefully next week I'll have those abatements.
So when something like this comes through, I'm sorry, we're way off in the discussion here, but to bring it back, the, the change in the assessed value was because of a prompted reassessment or?
No, the Board of Tax Appeals. Um, the second page tells you the reasoning, and so the Board of Tax Appeals, they applied for an exemption.
Oh, B R T A, that's what it stands for. Okay, I didn't understand that, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Dawn? Anything else?
I have a few things, if you would entertain a bit of new business. Um, the first thing is, it was brought to me as a concern from people who have not attended any meetings, that the, the public listing and then the publishing in the paper of attendees just by attending was kind of a harrying by the county toward the community. Um, and I'm so, I'm wondering if maybe we should just list people who are present at the meetings that want to address the board or who, who do end up maybe addressing the board, instead of just listing attendees.
I think I'm required to list everybody that attends, so I'd have to look at that.
Okay.
And see.
Okay. Required by?
I think by statute, but I need to look that up. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Okay. I thought the only thing that was required for actions.
I think it's visitors and actions.
Oh, okay. And I'm wondering if the visitors then means people addressing the board or just spectators?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I could see their point. I mean, if, if you wanna come for a specific issue or just to come to find out something, you know, and your neighbor didn't want you to be there, it's a little bit of an intimidation factor, maybe. Let's see.
I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you. Um, have we given any more consideration to doing maybe this end of the month meeting? It happens to fall on our working day today because yesterday was a holiday, but have we given more consideration to doing the end of the month payables and payroll in an evening setting?
I haven't really thought about it, no.
Mister Chairman?
What?
Have you considered that?
I, I, I can see no use, reason to do it myself.
Well, I think the, the reasoning would be so that people could attend who, who work during working hours of the regular commission meetings. It would just be a monthly opportunity for people instead of them having to reschedule their times if they wanted to. You know, they could come and ask questions from that month or be caught up on issues for which they might have a particular interest.
Yeah, a lot of people have called me and asked me questions. They need to know something, maybe they'll call me.
Um, the next issue under new business, I was wondering, since, since we as a board, it wasn't necessarily my position, but I would say it was both of your positions, it was printed in the paper. Since we as a board stated that our interest in the nursing home to continue a leasing situation at this point was to control quality of care.
I did not say that. I resent you implying that on every meeting that I did. She asked the question, you want to sell it or you want to care? And my answer is care. I am interested in care. Now, did I say I could control it by leasing it? No, I never said that.
You actually said you didn't see.
I did not say that, and please do not insinuate that I did. She asked the question and I responded with care.
Yes, because you said you didn't see how we could not own it and that your primary concern was quality of care. That is, that is what was said.
But it did not say that owning it would affect the quality of care.
So then my question is, how is this board going to monitor quality of care?
Well, years ago, before Kristen took over, we would get phone calls if we had people coming in or on care issues and then we would address them whether the administrator or the leasee.
So we're expecting the public to come to the commission with complaints about the nursing home if they have, if they have any.
Well, if I had a family member and there was a problem or something, I'd get it taken care of, I would definitely go to them.
I can see how that would relate to quality of care, that we are open to accepting, um, concerns about the situation there. I just feel that, you know, with everything being published in the paper and the commission's decision to not do a formal request for proposal on either opening it up to potential leases or the sale of the, of the facility, um, the commission's decision to maintain ownership and then renew, basically a renewal of a lease, uh, because of the same company and a similar lease. I feel that we owe them an explanation as to what our involvement is going to be. I would, I would like to see a written statement, you know, from the commission saying, this is how we plan to address our relationship. Because at this point, there's a lot of confusion out there. I mean, if you remember at the meeting, when we made the decision about the lease, Brock Mueller stood up and said he was just horrified with the care from the last provider. Yet, we remained in a lease with them for twenty-eight years. So.
No, I wasn't in here through that period of time. I can only tell you what happened towards the end of their deal.
Well, and he had insinuated that there were many problems and then they decided to come back after there was that change of ownership. So, um, I just think we're leaving a lot of loose ends without addressing it formally.
I guess I don't see the horn talking about.
I have a question.
It's never been an issue. If people have questions about it, they ask me.
I have a question, like, for you two, since you were here through the end of Mid America. Um, was the lease broken or did they wait, was there just no renewal? Did you evict?
Were leased to a different, were leased to a different entity. They were interested. They wanted to continue the lease.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is did you break their lease?
No.
No, the term of the lease, when the term was up, we just didn't renew it. Released to someone else.
So, what I, what I'm trying to get at here is, and I'm, I'm not saying that John Grace wouldn't do a bad job. Like, I, I think he's a very smart man. I think he's a very kind man, I'm talking personally. Um, if the quality of care is enough to harm with John Grace, you're still waiting the three years to, to get out of that lease.
Well.
Not necessarily.
I don't know if anyone's gonna lease it still, you know, so if I decide that they're not giving you enough care, they're out.
I don't understand that, that's why, that's why my personal opinion.
No, that's not in the lease.
Uh-huh.
That wasn't in the lease.
No, I said I don't know anyone that would sign a lease like that.
Right.
I mean, the state, the state more or less decides what the quality of care is there.
Right.
Other than, you know, minor things that someone might mention to you or that you see or employees tell you or.
Um, and, and that's difficult to understand for, uh.
Anything else, Alexis?
Um, well, I still feel that we owe the public that explanation since they weren't given the option to have any input. So, um, if you would please entertain a motion.
What?
Would you entertain a motion?
To do what?
I, I'll make a motion about making a, a statement from the commission.
Concerning?
Concerning our expectations for, uh, the standard of quality of care for the nursing home.
I, I just, I don't under, I, I just, I, I don't understand the purpose of it and I don't understand how we could, we could do that, or how we would do that, I mean. The, the care is there, that we felt we're getting the care now that we're getting and we extended that with basically the same employees under different ownership. So I think the community would assume that that is the quality of care we want. And that's why we stayed the course.
I wouldn't assimilate staying the course with, uh, taking on a new owner as the leasee. I would assimilate staying the course as keeping the same owner, which did not happen.
Well, I think it was clear in all the discussions that we expected things to continue to be at the quality that they were and Mister Gracie said that, that he liked, thought the quality of care was good and, and that's what his expectations were. I think we made a pretty, I stayed, I think the statement was made when we, we released it, when we leased it to us. With that understanding.
Maybe I should relay some of the questions that came to me. They read in the paper that the commission wanted to maintain ownership and did not want to seek any public opinion on what to do with the nursing home when the lease was coming to an expir- expiration date and there were going to be such major renovations needed. So they read in the paper that the commission desired to keep the nursing home in its possession and that the priority was going to be quality of care. That was stated. Whichever way you meant it, that's what came out to the public. So the questions that came to me were, how is the commission going to oversee quality of care? And that's, so, and so now that's my question to the board.
How have I done it in the past?
I, I do not know because I, you know, I've told you my personal opinion is I don't believe that that's the commission's responsibility nor do they have the ability to do that. But since I'm part of this board and the board decision was that quality of care was the priority and we were going to maintain ownership for that reason and sign a lease without seeking any other bids, then I believe that we owe an explanation.
Well, I guess you talk to different people than I do. I don't know how many people have called me and, and talked to me personally that have thanked me for getting this put done, getting a lease done. They were very satisfied with what went on, so I guess there's probably just as many people that haven't talked to you that way that have talked to you probably, so. You know, the community has different opinions and different ideas and, and I guess that's, if you want them to talk to me, I'll be glad to talk to you.
Well, I've had people tell me that they were satisfied with the lease, but I've also had a lot of discrepancy about, you know, okay, so we're signing a lease with someone who intends to build his own facility. So there are people that want the county to maintain ownership and what they believe is control over the facility and the operation there. But we signed a lease with someone who's going to create a new privately owned facility and take the residents that are operating with his business now into that new privately owned facility, which I personally don't have a problem with. But those people who thought we were maintaining control and ownership may not realize that when that project is finished, those residents will be moved. And I, and I'm not asking you to make a decision about what happens with the building at that point. I'm just saying there is a lot of confusion out there as to, you know, how did we decide to keep the building, not sell it, not look for other lease options, yet we leased it to someone who's going to move all of what I would consider to be his residence? Because their financial obligation is to his business, not to our facility. So they're financially obligated to him, therefore when he has a new room open up that he owns and the county doesn't, they get moved.
You know, there, there are hundreds of different opinions out there. Some people think we should have kept up with the remodel plan. Some people think we should have sold it. Some people think we're doing the right thing by letting this guy build it and deal. There are just, literally everyone has a different opinion.
So all I'm asking for.
I don't know how to address every single one of those.
I understand that concern, but what I'm asking for is a statement from the commission as far as an expectation. You know, I guess we went into the lease saying that we were doing it because of X and now we're on the other side of the lease coming out saying, well, our opinion is now Y, that we can't control it, the state mandates it and it's going to eventually become privatized. So, I'm just trying to address the unanswered questions and along those lines, there is also the unanswered question of the rent, you know?
I don't know if you're gonna do that in a statement. There's, it could be a statement that went on for ever. It could just be another question.
So are we?
Another statement or another question.
Are we going to? Are we going to credit the, the debt based on the information that was provided to us from what was purchased by the, the owner?
Do what?
The previous owner of Lincoln Park Manor gave us a list of supplies and other things that she had purchased and she insinuated that she wanted credit for those things against the debt that's owed. Are we going to follow up on this?
I don't think there's been any decision most of the background as far as collecting in what manner. At the best of my knowledge, unless you know of a decision that's been made that I don't know of.
No, I haven't heard a thing. That's why I'm asking. I even asked for that list so that I could look at it again. If, if, in case we are planning on addressing it as a credit possibility.
I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't. I don't have a list.
Okay, um, the other concern I have is that, you know, the board has been addressed in the past. Okay, um, the other concern I have is that, you know, the board has been addressed in the past and chosen not to take action on certain matters. Just as if I were a citizen coming here asking you those questions I just asked, and then, you know, we don't have a format by which that is brought up and potentially decided, because whether you call it tabling, or, or what you want to do with issue. Basically, what we're telling the public is that if, if you have a concern and you come in and, and voice that, and it's up to us to decide, we don't ever have to address it again, because we don't have a format to do so. So we're leaving it up to each individual to come through the door on a Monday at eight o'clock in the morning or so to repeat those same requests over and over. So I've put before the commission two viable options, one of which would be, um, having the end of the month meetings so that people could come. Uh, the other one is to work with a parliamentary procedure agenda so that we can have old business, and therefore, when we come in on a Monday, we know what that old business is, and we can decide not to make a decision again if the timing is not proper, but to ha, to omit old business without me, obviously, bringing it up and, and being labeled as beating a dead horse. Uh, there's no way to address these things, so that is definitely a concern for me.
You got a specific thing that you're talking about, under old business? Something specific?
Sure, I mean, the, the easiest example I can think of is, in that seat right there is where Mary Powell sat and brought us a complete, uh, display of a PowerPoint of all her concerns about the road. And so again and again, she has shown up with these same issues, and if it, if she doesn't show up, like she didn't show up today, we haven't addressed it.
She was here on Monday, wasn't she, and I don't remember saying anything about the road.
Well, actually, she brought thanks with her on Monday, and she thanked Michael O'Hare for coming out to.
I suppose that, I don't remember saying anything about the road.
But that's my point, so unless that person comes and addresses it repeatedly over and over, you know, I feel like no one here wants to hear complaints.
Didn't we come up with a form? A complaint form is supposed to fill out?
Yes, we did.
We can follow that complaint form to completion.
Yes, we did. So if we don't address it in old business as complaint form check, then it's an open ended issue. Any, any particular time that someone comes in, and maybe it's not just about roads, I mean, there are other things that decisions haven't been made, and then we don't discuss them again. Just like the progress that's being made, I had no idea that the health department was already, uh, in a trial period with the AT&T company. Not a clue, how am I supposed to know that?
With U-verse, not.
Oh, excuse me.
The, not with the data, 'cause that's what they're wanting us to move into, but.
Oh, so this isn't even a, this isn't even a trial of what we're really going to be signing up for?
No, no, because we don't want to pay to put fiber to outlining buildings, so they need to see if this is a. Because remember, the proposal was, was that they install fiber, we install fiber physically to every facility within the city of Lincoln. So, because. Let me rephrase it. The proposal was that we install fiber, they bring in the T-one line and we shoot internet to, to all these departments. That's not really a very feasible option cost-wise. So we were looking to see if the health department's internet issue would be resolved with the AT&T U-verse before we would look into that more expensive option of installing fiber to the locations.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
But it's, so, so basically, it's not the same service, so we don't.
Right.
Okay. But again, that's, that's the example that I'm bringing up, it's a prime issue of, you know, how can we make a decision without following through?
They're supposed to do the deal and come back with a proposal.
That's exactly what I'm saying. We're wait, we're always waiting on someone on the outside to come back to us and bring it to the table. If we don't make an effort.
Well, if they want to do business with us, I assume they'll come back. If they don't have a viable plan, if they can't put together a viable plan, I assume they won't come back. They're selling us a product. I don't think it's up to us to make the decision for them whether they can do it or want to do it.
If at any point in time that old business had listed that issue, then we would all be up to date on whether or not Ladonna was having problems, or whether it was going to be a viable option. You know, I feel that coming in and just waiting for things to drop in our lap to discuss is counterproductive.
So every, every Monday morning, we say, well, where's Ladonna's deal at? I have the same answer every Mon, every Monday for the last, what, there have been five or six weeks?
Yes, because basically what you're doing is you're putting the burden on Ladonna, or maybe even on Dawn, to come to us and update us as if they're to remember everything that needs to come before the commission. As opposed to having an agenda that says, these are still the undecided items. You list them, it's just like having committees. When you have a committee, you have the committee report for the breakfast club, and if they didn't have any breakfast, they just say, haven't had any, onto the next item.
If there's no new information, why would we visit it every week? Why wouldn't we just wait until new information was available?
Who's going to be responsible to bring that new information, you?
I would assume Ladonna, that's her department.
That's exactly what I'm saying, you're assuming that you're leaving everyone out there to come, I mean, as far as what I've read, there, there are no responsibilities for department heads to regularly be scheduled. It's nice that Michael O'Hare and Bob Howell come in every week, because we do get, I mean, am I supposed to say that to you? All we hear every week is that they just say that there's more rain. I mean, so that's the same argument. I personally appreciate the fact that they want to come here and at least keep us updated, even if it's a minute change.
They usually have new roads, new culverts that are flooded, new, you know, they don't know whether to discuss the same project or the same culvert that was flooded the week before. They have new culverts that's flooded, they have water over the road in a different place, they have a tree that fell down in a different place, they.
Which is still the same.
That's why they come in every week.
I understand that, but it's still the same scenario. These are our problems. We don't get to see pictures of, oh, you know, this was it last week, this is it this week, and I'm not asking for that. But they're at least coming in and making an effort to just solidify what has been done over the week, or what is supposed to be happening.
I assume Ladonna has her internet deal working down there, she'll come in and advise us as to how it's working.
Probably more so that if she doesn't have any issues, you won't hear from her, but if she's gonna have issues, she's gonna come and say something again. And the AT&T one, I really haven't jumped the bandwagon on it, um, and the phone system, because what we have isn't broke yet. And quite honestly, I'm not convinced AT&T is our option. Especially if you're saying that we should pay out the contract for Eagle Communications, because we've had AT&T and it was horrible. And I had every department in this building screaming at me all the time. You even said yourself, you noticed that the internet was, was down. Well, that happened tenfold, days, and people processing in, in, um, the motor vehicle office stood there for hours waiting to do their tags to get it to process. And the departments are happy with what we have, and quite frankly, it's, it's been nice not to have somebody screaming at me about the internet that I have no control, because I'll tell you what my answer had started to be, and it made everybody upset. Well, if I was smart enough to form my own internet company and do it, I would be doing that and not this job. I would be making a heck of a lot more money selling internet to people, and, and, but it, it falls on the responsibility. So I have been probably the one that is holding off on the AT&T a little bit. Um, the phone connection guys come in and kind of assessed all the phones, and he was, we were waiting on Ladonna to try out the AT&T um, U-verse to see if that helped with her problem. And then we were gonna move forward after that. She hasn't even been on it in a month. I'd like to give her a month or two to try before I even start moving. Because I can tell you, AT&T wants you to do it now, they want you to sign the papers, they want you to get into their, their business, and all I saw last week was, AT&T's down, I can't do business. Ask Carly Erbo.
On the fiber?
I don't know what she was on.
See, that's what I mean, we don't.
But, but that's the thing, the fiber is so unknown. The fiber is so unknown, that I, I, I don't trust AT&T.
But the U-verse is satellite, and the fiber is.
No, it's not.
Yeah, I had a, I had U-verse.
AT&T is not, no, it's not satellite. And here in town, it's a modem that they plug in and they plug the regular telephone line in. And basically, this is what they told me that they do. They say it's fiber, they tell you, when they were selling AT&T, they tell you that they are selling fiber. What the tech told me when we were having all our problems is basically there's a component in that office down there that they take out the one component and they install a new component, and they run the internet, or the, they run the U-verse over the copper line. The existing copper line is where it's coming from. So if you have AT&T U-verse, you have a modem that has a telephone line plugged into it. Now, if somebody else has a wireless version of it, that's possible, but.
Yeah, that's what I.
What we had here was you, you plugged the telephone line in.
You're not on Wilson?
I am now, this was a couple of years ago, before they ran the lines through Wilson.
So I just, and, so I've probably been the one kind of holding up the AT&T, because I can tell you that lady's been emailing Hannah like mad, trying to get it done. But she wants a contract signed, is what she wants, and, and that's the problem. They want what they want, but we need to have what we need. And I don't want to be pushed into something to hurry up and sign some kind of an agreement.
I understand that, but what you're explaining is that your office is receiving communications that are not brought before the board, because it's up to you as to whether or not you want to bring that information here. And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with your assessment of them trying to push something through. I'm not saying that I want an update because I want to make it happen now, I would just like an update. And if we don't have those types of issues listed as, you know, unresolved in old business per se, then it, how, how do we know that it's even out there, for instance? You know, or something that's, just like I asked about selling the equipment. Okay, so I was told that when we bought that payloader, that we were expected to get a certain percentage of that money back by selling the old one. Now here we are, four months later, five months later, and I haven't heard anything about that, and I don't know, I'm, and he said that he's planning on, you know, combining all that equipment to list it together, I understand that. But if those kinds of things aren't addressed, and, and.
You addressed it, then you're asking. All you gotta do is ask them, they will tell you the answer.
You're not going to appreciate me coming with a list every week and bringing up every single issue that needs to be addressed. If we had a list of old business that we simply check off yes or no, there's an update, that's going to be much more efficient. I can already see the irritation on you two by me bringing these things up and taking this time.
Whether you bring in a list on Monday, or whether you go through the list in old business, what's the difference?
Because we are spending extra time talking about whether it's even a viable option to have a list, let alone just checking off a list that reexists. That's what the difference is.
I'm tired of that.
My biggest issue is, is you guys are gonna want me to keep that list, and I don't know what you guys would be considered, old business and new business, or, or what you would deem to be appropriate on that list, because AT&T coming and giving you a presentation, I wouldn't normally list that as a, I wouldn't list that as an old item, because they gave you a presentation. And they were gonna come up with a cost, and then they were gonna come back. And eventually we'll get that done, so I wouldn't have ever had that on the old business list, so I would have to, if, if we went that route, I would have to have help with, you want that specifically added to the old business, does that make sense?
I understand that.
Because my, what I would perceive old business may not be what you perceive as old business.
I do understand that.
I don't have a problem putting bullet, bullets on, um. Just remembering to put everything on.
Well, I mean.
I'll need a gym.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the biggest thing, because I have to go into that calendar and open it up, and I don't really have, like, I mean, that's just an outlet calendar. I don't really have a, a good resource to.
Maybe if you could, like, do an example of what you're saying, and use some of our own stuff, like, woods and bridges, whatever needs to go on the agenda, maybe as a fiscal example to show these two. Maybe that might help make it a little more personable, maybe swaying.
Well, it just goes back to basic parliamentary procedure and how most boards, you know, functioning boards in a greater capacity do, even, even the tiniest boards around here. I mean, my daughter's four age club uses parliamentary procedure, so it's just something that I truly believe is valuable, and that's why it was created, and that's why it serves a purpose. So if you would please entertain a motion.
To do what?
For the agenda.
I, I guess you can move all you want, but I am not convinced that our agenda isn't fine the way it is. If you want to bring up bulletproofs of old business, it's fine with me, we can go over them.
Okay, I move to adopt an agenda based on parliamentary procedure.
Do I have a second? Motion dies.
Thank you for allowing me to make the motion. Another, uh, question and concern that I'd like to bring before the board is, two weeks ago, let me think. I believe it was two weeks ago, if I'm, if I'm right on my date. The Council on Aging came before the commission to get a response as far as, um, their budget was concerned, and at that time, we weren't necessarily approving or not approving the budget, but there was a question that came before the board about reserve funds. So I believe you, Mr. Chairman, gave the suggestion that four to six months would be appropriate as, uh, an amount to retain in an account or in savings, um, for the year over and above what their expenses would be. So I followed up by going to the Council on Aging meeting the very next week, and they made a motion based on your suggestion. Now, I'm not saying I have a discrepancy with what you suggested, but what I'm seeing as an issue is that when we're just giving opinions to boards and then they're acting on them, maybe we should be a little more concise with our expectations. Um, for instance, that particular board doesn't have the same rotation as the other boards. When I was looking at the, the county boards, a lot of them are three-year rotation, and that particular board is two years. So you don't have that same staggering, and you don't have people in there long enough to really get a grasp on what their responsibilities are. Um, when we give suggested guidelines for retention of funds like that, I think it should kind of be across the board so that there's a little bit more cohesiveness as to how these things are operating. There's been a lot of discrepancy on, you know, what is or what is not to happen, and it is our duty to have some oversight. So I would like to see us as a commission, um, create a, I'll call it a, a collaborative resolution pertaining to these county board appointments, just like we discussed about advertising for them and things like this. I, I think it's important to have an expectation that's set, not just once again, wait for them to have an issue, then come to us, drop it in our lap, and say, decide this for us. And then they went and made a motion that affects their entire next fiscal year, based on an opinion that was given by one commissioner. And Terry, I was wondering, did you happen to talk to Council on Aging, or, um, did you talk to Les Richards and tell him that if they spent the money, that we would approve, that we would, uh, expand their mill levy for next year?
No, I think, I mean, I don't, they have money sitting there at the bank. If their plan is to just hurry up and spend that so they get more budget money, that's not gonna work.
Well, that was insinuated at the meeting that I attended, and it was even said by Les Richards, who's not on the board, that he had spoken with you personally, and that you had given that advice.
I may have expressed my opinion to him on that, yeah. I, I don't recall doing it, but it's possible, because I'd tell anybody that, I don't care what department you're in. If you're intentionally spending money just to improve your budget position, that's not gonna work, I mean.
No, he was saying the exact opposite is what you told him.
No, no.
That you, he said that you didn't agree with the suggestion of four to six months, and also that if they spent that money down. Liz Winkler brought us the budget, remember?
I didn't say, I didn't say, I, inside the meeting, I think I said that I wasn't saying four months or six months. Or I think I said, maybe you say four months, maybe you say six months, there's no, there's no consensus as to a number, there was no consensus. Al Jones made a suggestion, what he thought was appropriate.
And then they did make.
But no one, it was never a motion, it was never formal, and the three of us never agreed to that, that was his opinion.
Correct, correct. And what I'm, what I'm bringing before the board is that based on his opinion from that day, which again, I do not disagree with, they, that committee, that board, made a formal decision, they made a motion and adopted. They, that committee, that board, made a formal decision. They made a motion and adopted that as their. Uh, expectation for themselves. So without us.
I don't think he instructed them to.
No, 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 I'm not. Right, but they're taking that opinion so seriously with oversight from here, from the commission. That that's what they went ahead and followed through with. So I'm saying our actions here do have a, a serious impact. On the functions of these other groups. And I think that it would be helpful for us to create some clarification there. If we did, you know, make a motion and a decision, you know, to have that as a, a guideline. The other thing is, like I just said, you, you were quoted in the meeting as giving them the impression. That if they spent this money, that it's going to improve their standing with their budget request.
No, I didn't.
Well, I appreciate you saying.
Never tell someone to spend money and improve their budget position.
And, and I will relay that back to them. And, but these are the concerns that I have. Because if this is what's happening with a small group like that, you know, you just take that and exponentially apply that and that's.
If they're gonna, if the money's gonna be spent down, it's gonna be spent down in the form of lower tax appropriation until that money is spent down. It's not gonna be to hurry up and spend it on different projects that aren't necessary.
Well, that was the insinuation and the, what they had talked about. They talked about even starting another program. Providing house cleaning services out of that office so that they could use up those funds. So there are all kinds of ideas on how to. I know. I know. And I'm not putting it on you. I'm just saying, when you're being misrepresented. You know, it, it just comes back on us. So. I'm, I'm suggesting that we as a group come up with a resolution. That is something for the, the county boards to look at. These are our expectations. You know, you shall not retain more than, you know, X to Y amount of months' reserve funds. And, um.
Then you're just encouraging them to spend it.
Encouraging them to spend money by saying.
If you say they're supposed to have X, X and Y, and they don't need to spend that much money, you're encouraging them to get it spent down to that money. I mean, that's kind of the way the government budgets wanted, worked at one time was that. You needed to be to zero by the end of the budget year.
I understand that, but you're, but.
But I guess, if you wanna be, you spend on what you need to spend and the rest of it you save. And use for what you need, need, I guess.
County departments, leftover funds roll over into the next year's budget program. Therefore, they, they don't really have an incentive to hurry up and spend it. If you have a set amount that you're gonna get every year. Then you basically don't have any incentive to hurry up and spend your money. But if your next year's appropriation is based on how much money you have left in the bank, then you have an incentive to hurry up and spend money.
I understand that. But if we're approving budgets based on those.
Approved their budget. We have not approved their budget. And I can assure you, when we do, we'll take into account, or I will, how much money they have sitting in the bank.
And are you gonna ask them how it's been spent from last week until that approval of the budget? Is that, is that going to have a factor?
We have, we get, we can get copies of what they spent the money on. They're available to us.
But I just told you what the intentions were as of last week when they had their meeting. Their intentions were to maintain X amount in the bank and use up the rest of it. Because that was going to justify their budget deficit. They do have a budget deficit. What, what was brought before us two weeks ago was a high dollar, a high, um, higher dollar amount than what is going to.
Using some of their savings, obviously, for some of those items, which is, that's what they should be doing. But that doesn't mean that they're gonna get that appropriation that they're asking for. But they still have that money sitting there. And if they spend it frivolously, that's gonna be taken into account too.
And I agree with you. I think that we need to establish that so that it can be a known.
But there are, all the budget, the budgets look to me like there were things in there that weren't absolutely necessary. Not that they worth to be good things to buy, you know, for their, for their deals. Uh, but, you know, if they go out and start blowing money. Then they can't expect me to approve them. If, uh, I'm gonna give you a reference, and I'm not complaining about it. The Sylvan ladies make quilts and they wanna get a good sewing machine. I support that a hundred percent. But if they're gonna go out and throw away a whole bunch of money here before the budget time. Still thinking that they're gonna get that money for that sewing machine, then they're throwing that money away on the sewing machine, in my opinion.
Well, it wasn't the senior centers having to do anything with their reserve funds. It was the council having reserve funds.
No, the council to a certain extent, their money goes to the senior centers.
But that's what I'm saying. They are the ones with the, sitting on the savings. It wasn't, it wasn't the senior centers who were making the motion to have X amount in reserve. It was the council itself. So, I'm saying once again, the commission has oversight of this. And if we don't provide a clear expectation, we're just going to run into this problem. You know, a he said, she said, it was your opinion, it was his opinion. I feel that we need to come up with a resolution. Especially pertaining to the term, the terms. Uh, I don't know why that board is different for some reason, but it is.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you're gonna word a resolution. If you'd like to submit some kind of a draft. I would look at it, but I, I don't know the proper order to address the issues. I guess in a resolution. But I would look at something if you wanted to draft something.
Okay. So, okay, I'm, I move to provide a written statement from the commission regarding. I, I won't call it a written statement. Let's call it. Okay.
Why don't we, why don't we develop this statement first?
Because I want permission to do it. And, and it doesn't have to be approved. But I want permission to create it, not just for you to say, yes, do it, and then I come back and then it just, and it never goes anywhere. I wanna know that it's going to be taken seriously.
I don't see that your motion's gonna make any difference in that, that, I mean.
I don't think we need a motion to do that, a draft.
It's just to make sure that it is reflected in what has to go. I mean, this whole conversation isn't going to be recorded as far as this is. You know, in the minutes, it's going to say that there was a committee, even if it's just myself, created to do this. And I will bring you drafts into your side.
I would rather you, I would rather you bring me. First of all, I wanna, I wanna know what, a clarification of what you're wanting, I guess. I, I still don't understand what you, what you, what you're wanting, uh, a statement from this commission to be about. I, I don't understand. I, I.
About what the expectations are when you serve on a county board and what that county board is to do with its funds. And how long the term is going to be and what sort of questions need to be brought back before the commission? Or how often they need to report to the commission? Or, um, what the, uh, consequence is for doing something. That isn't listed under, or isn't, you know, uh, given as far as what a recommendation is. It's a recommendation by the board for a coun- for a council or a committee on how to conduct itself. Because right now, you have people running wild. I mean. Do, are we under the, are we, are we all understanding that those budgets were brought to us? The, the Sylvan budget, the Lincoln budget, the Council on Aging budget, by the same person. Who only res- who only represents one of those three entities. And that when those budgets were presented, the two senior centers actually got reduced. Their, their budgets were reduced from the previous fiscal year. The only increase in budget request was for the council itself. Who is the entity that has all the savings stored? And if your position as commissioners all along was that. They should have been utilizing the funds, you know, appropriately to not outspend themselves. How did they end up with all of the savings? Why did they keep getting that money every year as that savings just built? And, and it didn't happen overnight. This is many years of them having additional.
Well, I'll tell you, one of the reasons is that we were under the assumption for a couple of years that they were to get two mills and we gave them the two mills. And then when we realized that they were not needing that much money, we began to look at the resolution. That was voted on by these voters here that it said that it read up to two mills. And so therefore, we decided we could set an amount, not exceeding two mills. So, we set, last year, we appropriated seventy-five thousand, I think, to the Council on Aging. The budgets for Sylvan Senior Center and Lincoln Senior Center, that's a Council on Aging, has to decide that. Cause that's where the money comes from. We give it to the Council on Aging.
But actually, the resolution says that the commissioners will collect that mill levy. The commissioners collect it. So it's your decision whether you give one hundred percent of the allotted mills to whichever agency. You could be distributing it to, yeah, equally or to, I mean, if there was a group that formed and wanted to have some service. And they were an organization, it, the actual resolution doesn't even say that you have to be.
I suggested last year that they give it to the nursing home. I'm sorry, but we have expenses out there that has to be prayer, prayer. And what other organization uses the services for the elderly? There's nothing but elderly out there. But you guys would all get mad about that. I can guarantee ya.
I'm not saying I would get mad about that at all. Thank you. Well, yeah, I mean, it's actually the same amount of money, Dawn. If we have a line item for one hundred thousand, right, approximately?
A hundred and twenty this year.
So, and that mill levy is getting up there to approach that amount? There, you're save, you're saving a hundred thousand. I hadn't heard that suggestion, but I'm, I'm glad that you came up with that. But yes, I think that proves what I'm saying, that there hasn't been any kind of, um. Clarification is the word I'm gonna use. So I would like us to create something on paper. I've noticed, I've looked back through the last, you know, seven or eight years. And I've seen very few policies established. And it's my understanding that a commission's primary focus is budgeting and policymaking. And I think we're lacking in one of those areas very, very much so. And you deserve to be congratulated for keeping a savings and us not being in debt besides the, the hospital bond. And that is a wonderful, uh, situation where you have it paying for itself in essence. You know, we're still subsidizing what we agreed to as far as the ten mills. But that additional debt is being paid by the, uh, revenue generated by the hospital itself. That's a great setup. I mean, I think that's all been handled very well. I don't see any policymaking and I don't see any follow-through. And I believe that that is one of our main duties.
You know, policies are good, but you gotta follow them. Unfortunately, I believe a year ago, we had a policy in this Council on Aging that, uh, some people refused to follow. And ended up in a pretty big disaster.
What policy was that?
Policy on turning in the, uh, signup sheets.
Actually, I believe you personally were addressed by the people who had been turning them in and they were never reported to be turned in. Because one particular person is in charge of doing all of that. And as far as what I understand on that particular board, the treasurer is not even acting as the treasurer. I'm not sure what is going on.
I don't know why you're, you're trying to blame them. It was, it was just a matter of, please give us the papers and they didn't come in.
No, they, no, the point is that you, it was reported to you, and I know this because I was here, that those papers were turned in. To one person and never reported from that person to the council. So.
I remember requesting them and we didn't receive them. I believe Howard's wife went over and was out two hours and got them. Brought them to us. It was very simple thing.
I showed emails to the council that were correspondence between some of these groups. And that had never received, the, the, the council itself had never received the correspondence. So I'm sorry, there were multiple situations where paperwork wasn't turned in. Because it wasn't getting to the secretary. It wasn't getting to the rest of the council. But you do know about it because I was here when it was reported to you that that was happening. And that's exactly what I'm saying. If we don't have a policy in place to have an expectation. You can't expect them on the lower end to follow policies when we don't even have a policy for anyone to follow.
I, I think. The Council on Aging, I think that you're gonna have to be a little bit careful on because number one, they're a not-for-profit organization. So therefore, they have bylaws that are filed that they have to, to do. I don't think term limits, you're gonna be able to change their bylaws for them. You may be able to request them to change their bylaws. But I think because they're a not-for-profit, just speaking from my experience with the Finch Theaters, not-for-profit. It's talks about their, their board members. Distribution of funds, again, you're turning the money over to an organization to distribute it. We really have no control once they, you turn the money over to them, how they distribute it. So I don't know how we could have policies on how they handle their funds. Unless you would specifically say, we want X amount to go to this organization and X amount to go to this organization. But I think because they're a not-for-profit organization and you turn your hands, the, the money over to them, then at that point in time, it's up to them.
Okay.
But I'm thinking their term limits, we might not be able, that board. Now, the other boards, anything is.
All the other boards are three years from what I saw. I'm pretty sure.
I believe so. And I think those are all by statute. Now, I, that, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think that you're gonna be able to tell a not-for-profit organization of what kind of term limits they can have. I don't quite understand why we are appointing their boards to be.
That's my question then. Why are we appointing the board then? If, if they are their own separate existence, why are we appointing the members? And if we are going to be involved in distributing funds, why is there not a set of expectations with that? I mean, we could be telling them, you're going to get these funds based on these qualifications. Otherwise, you know, as the resol- as the resolution reads, just like you said, it could be going to the nursing home. It could be going to any group out there that we deem as providing services for the elderly. If we wanted to take that money and distribute some of it to the OCCK instead of giving them money out of our general fund, we could do that as well. If we were saying that this portion of that money is to be used for whomever you serve in our county that is over sixty or over sixty-five. We could be saving ourselves money in many different ways. Any group is eligible for that mill levy that, that we deem as. Under the guidelines of providing services for the elderly. Actually, there could be a private business that provides services for the elderly. We could be subsidizing, you know. Actually, the idea that they had about providing cleaning services, um, wasn't a bad idea. People could apply to the county for that mill levy money to have a subsidized bill. Where, uh, merry maids is coming in for them once a week or, or however they, you know. There's no clarification there and it has created, uh, a lot of problems. Why are we appointing members to a nonprofit then if it really has nothing, if it has no connection to the county?
I think it's because they have it in their bylaws. But why it's in their bylaws is a. To whoever set that up.
Anything else, Alexis?
What are you gonna do on that truck?
Oh, yeah, we can decide on that truck. I don't know, it's close.
You don't really need our permission. I mean, isn't it within their purchasing power?
Asking if it's okay, if they could go ahead and get it. I think they, they want some, they want.
That's pretty big capital purchase.
Yeah, they don't like to do that without asking our opinion or whatever, I think's all it is. I don't have a problem. It's up to, they think it's a good enough truck. We need, we need a truck and we can look and look and look and find out, maybe not find a better deal. I don't know.
Did you say what year it was?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
Had about two hundred thousand miles on it, I believe. GT four fifty-six.
Well, I think we probably better have a motion for that deal.
Is he prepared to make an offer on it instead of just pay asking price?
Well, I, I, I'm guessing he probably will.
I think that's what they're wanting to maybe get approved is that they can negotiate with the person if the truck meets. So I guess if you do a motion, maybe you just put that, that you moved, that they can negotiate-
A price.
A price if the truck is satisfactory and then they can come back and approve, you can approve the purchase the next month or next week. Well, literally next month.
Well, I think they'll tie it up, tell the guy that they'll take it, I think, probably.
Yes, we can make a motion, they can negotiate the guy not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
We can do that. I would move the Loud Highway Department to negotiate a personal truck, the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
You have a second? I'll second. Any discussion?
My, my one question under discussion would be, when we don't budget for these types of things, where, where do we, um-
Funds, where the funds would come from?
Yeah. Yes, excuse me.
Let me look and see what they have in their special equipment. Normally we spend the special equipment down, um, and then they would, out of their regular fund. I think they still have money.
In special equipment, when, is that pre-allocated when the budget is passed?
No.
No? That's the rollover?
That's the rollover.
And then can it ever come out of that fund for any other purpose?
No.
Okay.
It has to, has to continue.
Be for equipment?
Yeah. Well, I shouldn't say that, it may be able to go back into the fund, but I'd have to look at the statute. It may be that it can go back into the fund that it was drawn from.
Okay.
But I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Okay.
Um, they have a hundred and twenty-three thousand in their special machine fund.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All fair side?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Close. Motion's carried.
Okay, so I'm gonna find out if highway can come back in.
That, Dawn, would be an example of something that I would consider to be old business. When I ask you a question and I'm not gonna be here until next week potentially, or even if I was gonna be here, you telling me isn't the same as us all knowing at the same time. And I'm, I'm assuming that since neither of you responded, you don't know the answer to that question.
What?
If the money that is-
Oh, I do not know the, I don't have an answer to that.
So I would consider that to be-
I would guess it. I knew, sure, it cannot be spent for the rest home or something like that.
Yeah. But it might be able to pull back into working.
It may be able to fall back into-
Unless it went into the general, unless it-
See, I, the general fund can go to any other fund, but any other fund can't go to the general-
Can't ever go back into the general fund, okay.
So I'm not a hundred percent sure on what those-
Okay.
What those, because you'd have to look at what the statute says for the transfer. Because they have to be able to have a KSA to be able to transfer it. So you have to-
I understand.
And it may say that it is allowed to go back into the fund that it came from. I think the capital outlay funds say that, that they can go back to the fund if they need to-
But the special equipment is different.
Yeah, possibly.
Okay.
They have their own set of statutes, so.
My only last, um, comment is I would like to thank Jennifer O'Hara, maybe you could even write her a note or something, but for coming on short notice from our discussion last week so that we could have her available before the lease negotiations. I, I don't think we had enough time to appropriately counteract that lease. You know, it was presented to us and it was already under an expiration. So I would have liked to see things a little bit differently, but I do appreciate her coming over here and making an effort to have a meeting with us, um, prior to that.
Anything else? Not this, it's Tuesday, Monday.